They've been wearing a flag shirt, too.
Welcome, everyone, to the city council meeting for October the ninth. If we could have a road call to establish a call, please, ma'am?
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
Terry McClung.
I'm here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Peg Adamson.
Here.
Kristy Kendrick.
Here.
We have six.
All right, we can stand in pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Dismissed. Seconded.
Okay, Kristy seconded?
Oh, Peg seconded.
Okay, all right.
I would like to add a discussion of city council comments.
Can you wait until he asks for that?
Yep, well, go ahead, go ahead.
We do have a order.
All right, Kristy, put.
I would like to add a discussion of city council comments.
All right, we can put that under new business number six. Anyone else?
Do you want to give an update on parking recommendations from planning and what may or may not be happening or not? About when they had a meeting about fixing the spaces going up Springfield, all around the apartment? I didn't know if that was happening or not, and I didn't know if you wanted to.
I have, but I don't really have a formal.
No.
Yeah, you know, I think that's something that. Anybody else? I would need to discuss the 25 North Street project, whether we do a. I've got some information there we need to put on there, so that'd be item number seven. Any further additions?
Was there a second to the first one? I didn't hear.
I think that somebody seconded, Kristy's.
Oh, I'll second.
David did, okay.
Question, the North Street lease going before the permanent location seems unusual.
Well, it's new business.
Well, true, so we're going to talk about the lease though before, and it was one of the considerations, but we're going to talk about leasing it before, but okay.
It kind of followed right into, yeah, I don't know whether it's old business, new business, but we put it as new business, yeah. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of the minutes? Get a motion, salute.
Well, second.
All right, motion and second. Any corrections, additions?
Mickey, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you.
There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes have submitted, signify by saying aye.
Right.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. We still have a single planning commission vacancy that's available, and we also have, under the hospital, we have an application from Leva Murphy that's in your packet there that we can discuss the next time. But also at this time, too, Michael Mary is here to bring us up to date. Where's Michael? There he is. About what's happening with the hospital.
Thank you, folks. After quite a bit of preparation, I think the notes that I generated are sitting on my chair at home where I wrote them, so I'm winging it this evening. I'm here to tell you about what's going on with the hospital commission, and to start off, in January of this year, I promoted that our commission back off to quarterly meetings because I felt like our primary purpose at the commission at the moment was administering and watching after our incoming funds and dealing with the banks that the monies are in, so I didn't think it required as much time as our monthly meetings gave us. Now, by March, that had to be rescinded and gone back to monthly meetings. Allegiance Healthcare in March approached us with the idea of doing some extensive remodel to our current structure that would probably take us into the next 20 to 30 years with a functional building. The idea behind this being that the city would take out a bond that would pay for the construction. Allegiance Healthcare would sign a contract saying that they would pay their lease fees and be here presumably for the next 20 some odd years while these bonds' monthly fees were paid off. So, at this point, with the help of the mayor's office, a request for qualifications to architectural firms were put out in two papers, and as I understand it, there's been quite a wonderful response. On the 13th of this month, the mayor's office will open those offers, and a determination will be made as to which would be the best architectural firm for us to go into business with, at which point the commission would then enter an arrangement with that firm and arrange for drawings to be created that would give multiple options of degree of expense in this process to create a maximum amount of expenditure for not only us as the city, but Allegiance Healthcare and what they're willing to sign a contract, willing to pay. So, as it stands right now, the commission is in hold, waiting for these requests of qualifications to be evaluated, at which point the mayor's office will approach the commission on our next meeting on the 16th, and we will probably at that point make a decision, if it hasn't already been made, as to what firm we'll be doing business with. So, at that point, we are again in hold and waiting to hear from the mayor's office. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Michael, is there a ballpark figures that have been thrown out as far as?
The numbers that have been tossed around by the commission and none have been brought up by Allegiance at all have been $2 to $8 million. Now, initial calculations imply to me at least that those higher numbers would indicate an amount of money that it would surprise me if Allegiance would want to support. So, my guess is, is that we're looking in the area of $2 to $4 million. But, of course, that's entirely up to Allegiance to determine what they can and are willing to spend.
Well, my only concern is to, you know, to hire an architectural firm is not cheap.
No, sir, we anticipate this to be in excess of $20,000, and this is a fee that the commission will take on ourselves in order to create these drawings. Now, I feel personally that if Allegiance did not follow through with the suggestion they made, what we would end up with would be viable drawings to tell us what we as a city might be required to put out in the near future to maintain this building and keep it available for use for the next 20 to 30 years.
I've never, I'm going to agree with Terry, I've never saw anybody go out and hire an architectural firm and spend that kind of money before they even knew if they could afford to spend that kind of money. That's kind of remarkable to me, that, you know, just the city willing to do it, and a $2 to $8 million range is huge, and then there has been no real discussion, unless there has been, and we're not aware of it, of how many beds are being shot for, what kind of services are in there, are you going to have operating rooms, are you obviously going to keep an emergency room, are you going to redo the ancillary? You mentioned earlier when you started something about potentially remodeling, so now it sounds like it could be anywhere from a remodel to a new hospital, that's what I'm gathering, $2 to $8 million, because a 25-bed hospital without OR and with inpatient beds, ancillary support, services, et cetera, even if you take out the non-clinical areas, it's going to at least cost you $6 to $8 million.
Without a doubt, and to begin with, our licensure limits a great deal, the degree that we can expand. I don't think expansion is even the question as much as it is maintaining our current status and position in a building that is able to be supportive in 20 to 30 years.
You have the option of either inpatient beds, acute care beds, or swing beds.
Swing beds, yes.
And you still have an OR in there, which, you know, are you going to keep it, are you going to remodel it, because that goes extremely expensive when you start getting into ORs and tech rooms, and you occasionally have endoscopy procedures and stuff that are done there, so I'm going to agree with Terry, it seems like running for an architectural firm is out of sequence. That's my only comment.
I also am very surprised that the hospital commission hasn't explored other financing options. Normally, a project like this would be undertaken by Allegiance, not by the hospital commission. The hospital commission would perhaps lease the property and license its license, but that Allegiance itself would undertake the improvements to the hospital, and of course, with an agreement with the hospital commission, a long-term agreement, under which those improvements would be amortized, that Allegiance would pay for it and would undertake the financing for it. I don't, it's really unusual in a commercial situation like this to, for the landowner to be making all these improvements.
Well, the licensure, again, requires that Allegiance maintain the building to the standards required to run a hospital in. It doesn't require them to make sure that the building will stay standing in the future. And the building does belong to the city of Eureka Springs, and I think to a degree is our responsibility to maintain a building, a structure that a hospital can utilize.
Have you talked to anybody besides Allegiance?
No, ma'am, and that's because we are in contract with Allegiance at the moment, and they're really the only ones we can talk to. Now, as of.
Is there a confidentiality agreement?
No, ma'am. But we are talking another five years before we could possibly be out of business with Allegiance, as long as they want to stay here.
That doesn't mean you can't talk to other people.
No, ma'am. And we are open to talking to anybody that would like to come in and visit with us on the subject. We do have to be careful to protect the contract that we have with Allegiance. I really don't want Allegiance to be under the opinion that we're out fishing for new services.
Why not? We might get a better deal.
I think when the time comes, the end of this contract will absolutely put us in a position to open the doors to other opportunities.
But it sounds as if we'll already be well into a renovation of the hospital to Allegiance specifications.
That would probably be true, and that would be based on the fact that Allegiance would have to be here for another 20 years to pay for the funds that they've wanted allocated and spent. Allegiance will have to guarantee under contract that they will make those funds available throughout the duration of that loan or bond, or we can't enter into an agreement with them.
I think you're going at this backwards.
I agree. Yes, ma'am.
Has a decision been made yet, Mike, in regards to where they want to put the helicopter thing on top of the roof, as mentioned, or still down on the ground?
No decision at all has been made, but I will tell you that I have talked with architects that tell me that the cost of doing such a thing would be so outlandish that the entire structure would have to be redesigned and reinforced, and because a gasoline-powered machine would be landing on the building, the building would have to be able to cope with any fire or accident that that machine would present to the patients below.
So hopefully we're still keeping out leaving it on the ground.
Yes, ma'am, without a doubt.
Because I know I personally would have a heart attack knowing it was up there.
With enough money spent, that would really be great, but I don't think anyone is going to be anywhere near prepared to do that.
We've got a 20-story hospital, like I'm saying.
Exactly. And I think the goal predominantly is to maintain the outer features, at least the exposed features of the facility, in the current condition, or in their current look at least.
Their historicness.
Let me add a couple of things for the council. One of the reasons we've gotten to this point was we didn't know, and the hospital commission didn't have a clue or allegiance, how much renovation was going to cost. The first thing to be done is to come up with some sort of a preliminary plan or schematic plan where they can come up with some good cost estimates. That's what this proposal is all about right now. The normal fee for a project like this, if you want on the whole project, is probably about 6% to 7%. If it's a $4 million project, it's 7%, you're looking at $280,000 fee. The portion for schematics is roughly 15% of that, so you're looking at around $20,000 to $30,000 to do schematics. The reason we're looking at this point is similar to what we run into with the school. We can't, we don't want to put any money into the school because we don't own it. We don't want to borrow, and we can't borrow any money because we don't own it. The same thing with Allegiance. They can't borrow money because they don't own the project. So, what we're, have proposed to them is to, if we do the bond, if this goes through and everything looks right, is they would put up a surety bond to guarantee payment in case something happened. If they went out of business, if they went bellied up, in five years, the surety bond would pay for the whole project, and you can get a surety and a performance bond to cover that. We checked into that, and that would be part of the contract. David?
About four years ago or so, Allegiance hired some architects at Holiday Island, I believe. They were looking at building, at that was that time they were playing around with the new hospital.
Correct.
And then they also were looking at that land out by the Razorback gift store and all that. So, they had done a lot of preliminary analysis and design of something that met what they felt was the needs of this community and what they could afford, and I think it was still coming in about $8 million, ma'am, if I remember correctly. So, it seems to me that there was already some preliminary work based on the needs of Allegiance that had been done, and unless that's dramatically changed, that ought to be considered.
Well, that's, well, it is, but that's a new building, and it's a lot easier to put all those projects into a new building than it is into an existing framework.
Well, because you're going to double the cost trying to save.
So, you know, that's, but that's the whole point of, you know, the people who submitted and worked with Allegiance on that have submitted a proposal. So, we'll see what happens with that on there.
Well, it is easier because it turned out, basically, the last hospital where it was at, we ended up building new, for the very reason, and it came out a lot cheaper, and they tore the old one down. And then, again, you get efficiencies of everything, new technology, the wiring, the computer hookups, the electrical, everything that goes along with it. But when you try and salvage, unless we're required to save that building from an historical standpoint.
Well, that's something the hospital and the architects are going to work at, you know, so.
I'm still confused about the architects.
No, appointment, Terry. Sorry.
Just, I just thought I wanted to say was that the hospital commission has the money. I think it is a positive thing that they're doing to see what the viability is for the old building, and, you know, it's not like we have to come up with it, and it's something they can do, make the decision on their own anyway. You know, if it has to be bonded or something, that if we have to take it out, the city has to bond, and then it comes to us, of course, but as far as this part of it, I mean, it's, I'm not sure how it's all going to shake out, but I think it is a positive step and probably worth spending the money to see where you stand, whether it be Allegiance or anybody else, like you say, down the road.
Thank you, Mr. McClung, and thank you, Butch, for the assistance and the explanation. Let me first point out that none of the commission members, and that includes myself, have anywhere near the experience to understand a lot of your questions and a lot of the circumstances that we're facing in answering these questions corporately or through the city. We are leaning very heavily on the mayor's office and Butch for his expertise in helping us follow through these processes correctly and accomplish the goals effectively that best benefit all of us. So, we're not flying, you know, by the seat of our pants, we're really, really trying to follow a set of rules that I don't think most of us even know exist, but we're trying to pull this through so we can present ourselves with some options on how to save our hospital and keep it alive. And going to this point, yes, it puts us in a position where we will see the expenditure of these drawings. The commission is not hurting for funds at this point, and I believe that we can afford to spend this in order to look into these possibilities, because it's something as a community we're going to have to face, whether it's with Allegiance or anybody else. If we're going to have a hospital, it's apparently going to have to be where this one is, and we're going to have to figure out some way to save the building and keep it on its feet for a while.
Please. And I understand, but one last thing, when you get ready to do with the architects who's chosen, somebody has to be leading this, telling them what it is they're designing. They can't just design something for you, so.
That's absolutely true.
If you're going to be relying on Allegiance, which has already done it, they pretty well, have already mapped out what they thought they needed, even though it was in a new hospital. So, the chances of those services, the number of beds, a new MRI room, et cetera, et cetera, they already have, somebody's decided that, because I'm pretty sure y'all aren't going to sit down and design the hospital with the architects. I'm pretty sure that's not going to happen.
No, I think we're looking at status quo in as far as how the hospital is laid out and which beds are assigned to what kind of patient. I think we're asking the designers to look at the possibilities that we can see to make sure that this is a viable building, and will serve, give us services, make sure that our electricity and the various things that a hospital requires, the oxygen lines and specific electricity to run the equipment, all have to be intact and supportive.
Well, they do, but there's a lot of new designs of hospitals that make tremendous efficiency units. Do you do the pod with the nurses stationed in the middle, and you wing off of it? Where do you locate it? Where are you locating certain facilities or so? So, I guess that's, I'm just saying, somebody has got to be leading this with what is needed in the new hospital. Somebody's going to be making some decisions for the architects, or you're not going to get a good cost estimate.
I agree with you. I agree with you, sir. And any support that the council is willing to offer the commission, we are certainly open to any ideas, or whatever. We're not manipulating and pointing this in a direction on our own. We want the city council as involved as we. It's a big decision, and we ought to all be involved in it. So, our circumstances, we stand right now, is that once a firm is defined and it's time to call and ask them if we're ready to go into business together, at that point, we will be required to come up with those issues that you bring up, and we have some time for us to discuss it and for you guys to do the same, and for us to get together and do some brainstorming, perhaps. But I would like us all to have an idea of what we would like to see accomplished as the city council and as the commission. I'd like it to be the same goal. The commission is definitely willing to work with the council to get this accomplished.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Michael, appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a nice evening.
Our next, we got a department head, Dwayne is here. We had some questions last week regarding some water plans and about our leaky leaks and where we are, so I asked Dwayne to come in and keep prepared a little synopsis for us. I don't know whether, I think maybe y'all have it.
I think we've got something like that. Yeah, I got it.
Dwayne, you want to tell us where we are and what you're, where we're going?
Well, we're moving anyway, we're making progress. We tried to make it, the numbers, we ran it in August, and lost, and, you know, bottom line is, we're losing a lot of water, there's a lot of lost water out there, so, and that's been a goal. We started out, and just briefly, we'll run over the, we'd put something on the meter replacement program, and those numbers, we pulled back when it started in '14, back up through '16. This year, we're running, of course, with it basically over, we're running pretty flat, but we, 13.8% increase, so that was, those numbers look good. We hoped there would be a lot of the lost water that, you know, it would be better numbers there, but that's quite a bit of improvement. The sales are up, and, you know, some of that could be the growth. I don't believe we've had a lot of new customer growth. But, you know, like I said, in August, $26 million, $15 million, we take out what we know we're flushing, cleaning streets, sewers, a lot of, especially in the summer, we're doing a lot of automatic flushers to keep, you know, the corrosion down in our mains. You know, we still come out, which those numbers, we point out, you know, that's a high sales month, 35, and in the winter, we're running 40-something percent. So, those numbers, you know, we broke that down to where we kind of see what it's costing us, that lost water, that's one month, we got over $10 million gallons of water that is lost, which is significant amount. You know, numbers running 196, and '16, we run that out, we look at a loss of over, you know, like about $240,000. That, of course, will never, you'll never be flat, and health department, anything over 25% kind of starts to become a little critical. When I started, the goal was to try to get to 20%. I don't know, that's, of course, what you put in, investment of what you do, but we've found some, like I said, and we've upgraded our equipment, trying to go in-house, we've made some progress already. We're looking at our cost of purchase down from Carol Poone, right now, we're down 16%, which is saving us quite a bit, and it looks like we're going to come in below projections on our budget, so. But that, hopefully, we'll see what we do. We're going to have to see in-house, we've identified some areas, going to be some big holes here downtown, some of the bigger spots we know. What we can do, see what we can do in-house, evaluate it, go from there and see, see what we need to do at that point. And we mentioned, you know, obviously, and when we're searching, it was, we kind of knew already, we're looking at the older part down here, the higher pressure, a lot of our loss is downtown Main Street through this area. The goal we've talked about before is reducing the main pressure system pressure in that area, which will reduce the amount of loss per minute. But that's, is with everything within the budget of what we can do per year, so.
So, you, that new piece of equipment you got has helped you identify some big leaks, which is good. So, what is your approximate timeline to fix those big leaks?
Well, it's kind of like the street project with Flint that we're going to start down there. We've talked about that timeline of going into the middle of November with the traffic and that, so that's this year, so that's.
Flint Street this year, okay.
Yeah, start that with these projects here, so we're talking three spots that we've identified in this area.
Plus Finch Street in November.
Yeah. That's the goal, and we hope to maybe the sidewalk project on Van Buren to wrap that up and start this year, so some of those projects that we had planned have kind of been delayed, but. Some of those projects that we had planned have kind of been delayed, but, but, and, you know, we've, at some point, we, you know, that's the, getting those down, and I think Holiday Island is, they're, right now, they're, they're doing that. They're looking at reducing that pressure and taking bids of what that's going to cost, and it could kind of guide us with the cost, but it's going to be quite a bit. We can do it for less if we can do a lot of that in-house, too. Those PRVs in the system, it would be nice if we, you know, if we could model it, if we knew, we don't want to drop it too much. We're talking fire protection customers, and if you have any surges, you're talking more leaks and could be a lot of problems, so. But, that's something we're going to, in this program, we're going to do, and that's, like I said, I think this helped us, you know, we've tried to find those before and couldn't, and I think we, we're almost certainly having now, so.
We, since the very first time that we ran that test several years ago at like 2:00 in the morning, have you done it again since? Have we scheduled one? I don't remember.
No, we can, I mean, of course, that estimated what we were, you know, we were thinking was running, but wasn't metered, you know.
Right.
Of course, it was a slow part of the day, and it what, from which tank and what area. But, but that didn't allow any kind of flow data of which it was going and how much, and it was, it was just off the tanks.
Right.
With this equipment now, we can, we can isolate, this pipe is going this way and it's in this amount of gallons, so that's something we're going to have to do again.
Yeah, well, my point was, if we did it again, would you be able to compare notes to the previous time to this and see how much of a percentage of improvement? Or would that not show anything?
Oh, yeah, you could, you could, you could put it back.
I mean, I'm just curious.
Right, right.
Because we've done an awful lot of work since then, and I just thought maybe that would help show how many leaks have been fixed or whatever.
Yeah, we get to that point, tie back to see what we have. And of course, some of that, you know, we did that, we talked about it, and there was a discussion, still discussion, about if, you know, did we, would we put some money that came to light for just improvements and nothing else? You know, how do you use that money? And in those decisions, we knew we had problems billing the meters, and so we, we've been, you know, it took several years, you know, over two years putting these in.
And you did mine early.
Yeah. So, and so, some of that, some of the leak repair kind of decreased on us even, so, I mean, because at one point, the best we pulled in a month was 27%. And that's, but, you know, we've been up, we've had months back in the beginning up from 50 or topping over that, so. But it, of course, sometimes, you know, we know a big leak and we know that month's going to be huge, you're going to have to factor in millions of gallons and so. But, you're correct, that's something we want to do, is tie it back and do that again. And this time, we'll have to excavate some lines, but the goal is to, you know, know where that water's going and how much is going where, and start pinpointing it down.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what percent of the water meters have been replaced?
Well, the commercial is, is right there at the top. We're talking 99% or whatever. There's a few, yeah. Now, residential, those numbers haven't really changed as much in the last bit. Now, we've, you know, sounds an excuse or whatever, but we've had some turnover, we've lost some key personnel this year.
11% please.
Well, we're, we're looking at, I think we were 80-something percent residential.
After how many years?
2014 was, mid-2014, we, of course, it took a while to really get rolling, so.
Okay.
But that was within the timeframe of if we didn't have any of the other tasks or the leaks or the, it was, it was within our timeframe. And we've lost, like I said, the meter readers, and we're still, we're down two guys right now, we're trying to hire, so it's, and I don't know, we've heard that from other departments and, and, but we took, kind of took a hit this year in trying to get ourselves back up, and it did, it cost us some productivity and extra costs, so.
Okay, but you understand, if we talked about the meters, and that's taken three years because you wanted to do it internally, and the council even was looking at paying for you to bring people in to do it, but you wanted to do it internally. And you just said a while ago, you're thinking of doing the leaks internally, starting in November. So, based on what you just now said, is that really going to happen?
Oh, yeah, but you know, but to what extent, or are you saying at what extent and how long does it take us to get there?
Well, I don't know. You just said you'd start in November. That's what I want to know.
Well, we, we ran, we ran some numbers, which is, not trying to be facetious, but we ran some numbers if we replaced all the lines. Of course, you know, some of this, we can, we can spot repair, we can find the bigger ones, and some of the other seepage and some of the older lines, you know, they're going to have to be replaced. I mean, we're going to have to excavate and put them in. So, you know, current budget, looking at our numbers, what we had left, we just ran the math on it, and we could replace the 425 miles of pipe, it's going to, it's going to take us 400,000 years to reach that at the current pace, so. We said, well, obviously, you do what you can and, and you can't get overcome by the daunting task. You have to just keep after it, so. And, and like you said, if, you have to offset, if you, you job it out, you bid it out, to that cost, is it cost-effective in the long run of what they would come up with? The island, they, they did that, you know, I guess, two years ago. They bid it, and, and I don't, the results maybe weren't what they were wanting.
Well, $240,000 a year, a year, looks like it should have some urgency.
Yes, and that's, that's something that, that we acknowledge, and, and it has been a fight, but like you said, and that's, we made that our priority this year, and hopefully we finish strong on that.
Anybody else? Dwayne, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public comments.
James DeVito, 5 Center Street. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the meeting space for the city of Eureka Springs. I'm looking for council to be proactive and not be reactive on this measure because there could be considerable funds expended with very little return if we end up with what turns out to be just a temporary fix for this issue. So, I'm hoping that you'll take your time on this decision because there's a number of things for consideration. I'd like to place something else in the mix of things to consider, and that's something that Mayor Berry is familiar with, and I'm sure Terry remembers from when Barbara O'Harris was mayor here, and we're exploring the possibility about putting meeting space here in the auditorium. Mayor Berry drafted a blueprint. Unfortunately, we can't find it down at City Hall, and he's going to be looking through his files so that we'll have it available for council to look for. And that was creating a meeting space accessible off the sidewalk here, basically in the restroom area. Having been a builder my life, I'm not aware of the benefits of using a space like that. You don't have to provide a roof because you'd be working in the space underneath the main floor here of the auditorium. You already have your restrooms in place, you've got electricity and water on site. So, the cost of creating that space would not, not be that great. Yes, it would be more than a temporary fix like the fire station or up by the hospital. The downsides to those locations are, the farther you remove yourself from City Hall, the more difficult it is in those occasional times when you send Ann to look for documents. Think about having to go from up near the hospital down here to City Hall to retrieve documents when you could invest in probably the only building that we have in this city that has the potential use for the city as a whole. If I remember correctly, and it's been about 15 years, there was a meeting space for about 50 people, and I think a couple offices, and Butch and I are not quite on the same page as that, but hopefully I'll find those blueprints and we can determine the space there. It is an ideal location because the proximity to the courthouse. Also, the other benefit is, you already have some offices here in this facility. If there were a couple more offices created there, you could move the CAPC offices to the auditorium and save the costs incurred on the CAPC for rental of the property up on the highway, because I'm working toward cutting off a piece of the CAPC's income to build a parking facility over here to provide parking for the auditorium and much-needed City Hall. Let's see, what else we got here? Well, not much more. I'm a little surprised that the hospital commission is looking at spending $20,000. I, I know they've got well over a million dollars there, so I've always thought that that money was inaccessible, so now I'm finding out that suddenly it's accessible. So, in my opinion, there's well over a million dollars on the table, so think about that one.
Thanks.
Thank you, James. Any other?
Hi, my name is Tanya Seba, and good evening. I just wanted to address you because I work at the transit center for the city, and we have not had raises for three years, and we would like to bring that to your attention because we would like a raise, please. I mean, the mayor has said, you know, that we are seen mostly for the first time by the visitors of our town, and I just feel like we should be able to get a raise because the cost of living has gone up and so has minimum wage. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
That's it? All right. That's the end of the public comments. Bring us to new business, Joe Gunnels and Group Tour Franchise. Get a motion to discuss.
I'm going to.
Get a second?
Sorry.
Okay. I'm going to, Joe's here, and he's got his application in front of us, I think. Joe, you want to give a, tell us what's, do you, real quickly, as a, I can just hand these, or I'll just, why don't we hand, take one of each of these?
Okay.
And pass them down. These are the references, the application calls for two references, and then there's another, kind of a, it's a third reference, if you will, as part of the application.
Thank you. There. Oops.
Maybe it will. Thank you.
We, we have.
I got it. I got it.
Thank you.
And then I think there was one more that makes you all think I'm here.
Thanks, Joe.
Whatever you've got to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys, all of you, ladies and gentlemen, for serving. As I thought about this, you know, I've been on boards and committees and been in a lot of meetings and, and served, you know, in those capacities, but never in city council. Most of the meetings or the committees and boards I've been on have been meeting one time a month usually, and sometimes even just quarterly, so you all meeting twice a month. You know, I appreciate that. I can certainly understand and appreciate how much time you guys have to dedicate to all of this. And with that, I want to say, too, I apologize that a week ago, we were on the agenda. I knew I was going to be out of town, and so I arranged for my daughter to be here, not knowing there would be any questions or anything. It was two years ago, or, yeah, it was two years ago when this process was going, my wife and other daughter was here for that same type of meeting, and it came up and it just passed, and they never said a word, never were asked a question, and so they left, and that was all. So, I didn't know what to expect, so wasn't really expecting, I don't know what, didn't expect anything necessarily, other than it just to be the application to be reviewed and approved or not approved, I guess. But my daughter was here, she did come. She had been sick, so I want to apologize to you guys for the inconvenience of having it on the agenda but not getting to talk about it, but also just to acknowledge her so you would understand. She was here, she was sick, had been sick all day, and knew, as she called me in tears that night, and told me, Dad, I don't know if I've just lost your business. I, she was very upset. She'd got sick while she was sitting here waiting and had to leave the room and went, and without being too descriptive, she was sick. She, you know, she had to vomit. And by the time she could compose herself and get back into the meeting, you all had already, you know, rightfully so, but had to move on past that. So, just want you to know, we were represented, meant to be, and circumstances didn't allow that. Maybe there's a higher reason for that, I don't know. But, anyway, so my application is before you. You know, I've been asked to be prepared, I guess, to answer questions or to maybe, I don't know, to explain anything, but it's been said that I have not been promoting group tours, and therefore, group tour business is down, and that's actually not true. Of course, I, my whole life is the tour business, that's what I do. There's multiple things, you know, it's, it's a little multifaceted, but it's all, or most everything I do is group-related. Not every single thing. I've got a couple of little business things that are not group-related, they're web-based things, but, but the group tour business has been my life since 1978. I started as a local tour guide here with a Grayline Tour franchise that was here at that time, and worked for them, worked for another company for part-time, did that for 10 years, and then in 1988, started Joe Gunnels Tours, and have been doing tours in Eureka Springs ever since then, self-employed. And business grew, from 1988 when I started, business grew very rapidly. I am really hesitant to even use the numbers, of the numbers of groups that we used to do, we meaning Eureka Springs, not just Joe Gunnels Tours. But, it was due pretty much exclusively to the boom that took place in Branson, Missouri. The media boom that took place up there, 60 Minutes did an entire program on it, Regis and Kathy Lee, Good Morning America. There were several major national TV programs that, that did full episodes and sometimes week-long series on the phenomenon of what was happening in Branson, Missouri, and Eureka Springs absolutely benefited from that. And things have definitely changed. As some know, I guess I know Mayor Berry knows, but I am in business in Branson, Missouri as well. I've been in business here in Eureka Springs, self-employed since 1988 and in Branson since 1989. I don't have an office there, but I, you know, have a presence there and a long-time business there, reputation, and so I know that market very well. And Eureka Springs, sometimes, I think a lot of times... And Eureka Springs, sometimes, I think a lot of times, uh, gets kind of down on ourselves as far as group tours are concerned, because we think Branson is just booming so much with group tour business and Eureka Springs isn't, uh, and so what are we doing wrong? But I can tell you that that's not true. Um, Branson group tour business is down, um, immensely, and, um, so it's just, you know, it's just a fact from what it was back in the, uh, back in the day, as we'd say. But I have, um, you know, it's been said recently to me, uh, that, that I'm concentrating, uh, on individual tram tour sales more, um, maybe even exclusively. Again, that's not true. We have done things, "we" being Joe Gunnels Tours, um, to create a presence and awareness, um, you know, through social media, uh, through our Facebook page for Eureka Springs Tram Tours, the listing on TripAdvisor.com where all the reviews, um, are, are left, uh, you know, that, I set that page up and, and, uh, managed those reviews and that information on there, uh, EurekaSpringsTramTours.com. Um, we started doing online ticket sales, and our ticket sales are just doing great. Uh, they just are, and we're extremely pleased about that. Um, you know, we do a great job. I, I really believe that we do as a company. Uh, I mean, I am the company, so it's hard for me to stand here and, it really is, uh, to talk about what I do or what Joe Gunnels Tours does because I'm Joe Gunnels Tours. But, you know, I think I do a pretty good job on the marketing and advertising, and since, I believe it was four years ago, when, um, the city, um, changed the, didn't change, well, they changed the percentage that we as a franchise would get. Um, it had been originally, just to back up a little bit, it originally was set up on a fifty-fifty split. The Transit Department took fifty percent of the ticket sales and the franchises, plural, there were four tour franchises originally, and that other fifty percent was split between those four businesses. And then several years later goes by, then the Transit Director at that time, Lamont Ritchie, uh, suggested to council, requested it, and was agreed, to reduce that from four franchisees down to two. And there's a reason for that. I'll, I'll answer the question if you want to know what my opinion of, of why that happened, uh, happened, but nevertheless, it happened, that it was reduced to two franchises, me being one of them, and then one other franchise, who at that time was called Eureka Tours, uh, owned by Robert and Cindy Clark. So we go on, uh, for a few years, and that goes well. Now, Robert and I are making a little more money. By that time, the city had changed it from fifty-fifty to sixty-forty, so, um, we were both doing a little better, and, you know, we're good friends, we're actually family, but, you know, we were very good competition with each other as well, uh, and both aggressive in our marketing and stuff to get more business. Um, he sold the business and, and, uh, the company that bought him, or the lady that bought him, then two years later went out of business. The franchise was, the second franchise was available, the city council approved to issue it to a gentleman named Jerry Varner, I think it was called Making Memory Tours. Um, he was out of Washburn, Missouri, and, uh, they did tours, uh, as a franchisee for two years, and, um, two years, uh, I believe, I believe four years ago, and I think it has been that long now, um, that it was decided by council to, uh, we were asked, I was asked to accept, I think, uh, Smitty asked the city to change the percentages again, uh, from sixty-forty to sixty-five thirty-five, so that the franchise, uh, franchises that, uh, would get thirty-five percent, and, uh, Mr. Mitchell, I, I will defer to you, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I'm, my recollection is, I believe, uh, we were in a workshop and talking about this, and I believe it was you that asked me, um, as we agreed upon this, you, you, I believe it was you that asked, uh, something, as my recollection would go like this, "Mr. Gunnels, I want to be sure that we agree or in agreement here. So if we, the city, decide to allow or to issue you the franchise and not issue the other franchise to anyone at this time, would you be willing to accept the thirty-five percent deal?" And I said, "Yes." Now, I don't, do you, I don't know if that's rec, if you recall that or not, if it wasn't you, it may have been one of the other council people at that time, I think it was you. Nevertheless, um, that is, so we agreed to that, and, and it's been great. Um, we've made more money, and I've spent a lot more money, uh, to, to promote and to market. Uh, we're now, instead of, last year we produced ten thousand rack cards, uh, Transit Department helps, uh, uh, helped pay for those last year. We printed twenty thousand this year. I started paying, uh, brochure delivery service to distribute those. Uh, our, our TripAdvisor rankings, uh, are so, doing so well, and so business is growing and doing well. Group tours are up a small amount, but they're up. And talking to my colleagues in Branson, um, and please understand, some, again, some may be at the, at the council knows and some may not, but a lot of the group tour business that comes to Eureka Springs comes through Branson tour operators. Um, as one of the sheets that I gave you is from the Branson Travel Planning Association, and, uh, which was formerly known as the Branson Area Receptive Association, but it's a predominantly, it, it used to be exclusively a group travel, um, uh, association. Many of those members, I mean, they, they booked their tours, they send them down to Eureka Springs. Um, pretty much every tour, uh, tour company in Branson that are sending groups to Eureka Springs has us, uh, has Joe Gunnels Tours serve as their guide service, whether it be just for the tram, uh, tour only for their groups, or for a full tour where we step on their coach, spend about two hours of time on their coach, and then a ninety-minute tour on the trams. In talking to those people, uh, my friends up there and colleagues, they, uh, are seeing a trend as well of a small increase, and it looks like that next year will be another increase. A major increase, probably not, but a small increase. So, I want to say this about individuals, that there's no argument that the individual sales are up, and up, I, I think fairly significantly. Uh, Smitty knows, uh, the, the exact numbers and percentages, uh, he can address that if he, he wants to, but I just know that our sales, uh, through our website and through our efforts, is up noticeably. And, um, and so I think about group, well, what if groups, what, what are groups? What is a group? And a group is a group of individuals. A group, just, a group of people means there's more than one individual. And so our individual ridership is up, and groups, uh, come out of our, out of, out of those individuals, and, and as an example. Um, after we're done with a tram tour, not, you know, I don't know how often, so please, you know, I'm not trying to say that it happens every day, but I can tell you that throughout the years, multiple times a year, uh, and, and, uh, Tim Garrison is, is here this evening and, and does, uh, tours for us, and helps and does an amazing job, uh, but, uh, thank you, Tim, but he could, he could, you know, attest to this as well, but we have people come up to us after the tour and talk about how much they enjoyed the tour, and they said, you know, things like this, I'll use, uh, this as an example statement, but, um, "Boy, the tour was great, this was awesome, said, 'Want to go home and tell my church about this and get them to come, they need to come and see this town, they need to do the tour.'" So, the more individuals that we haul and increasing our sales there, I believe, and it is, it is showing to be true, that that will continue to be true, that we will see some increased group sales just from individual ridership. So, again, groups, group bookings sometimes comes out of people that are on the tram tour just here on their vacation. They go back and tell others, they're, whether it's the church, whether it's a school, whether it's a civic organization, or a travel club, or, you know, senior citizens home, whatever it may be, and then they want to bring groups. So, all of it is, is equally important, and I think, you know, we, we work hard to, to promote both, and, uh, you know, but if, if group tours is down a bit, and it's not down right now, but it is slightly up, then if we concentrate more to promote group, or to promote individuals, and, and we don't, uh, any more so, uh, than groups, but if sales are up for individuals, I believe it'll result in more group sales in the future. Um, and so I ask the council, again, to just, I think at this point, we're just looking at accepting an application, which then sometime around December, I believe, it comes up then for an actual, uh, vote to renew the franchise. Tonight, I think, is just to accept the application. I believe that's correct. So, does anybody have any questions for me? Jerry?
Well, Joe, the, the, really, the only reason that this is, comes up is because, uh, Smitty, uh, spoke at, at our meeting, and if I remember it correctly, it was basically stated by him that, that he can do it all, that, that, uh, the business is, is not coming from, from you as he anticipated it should be, and that, and that he can do it all with his staff. So, I, you know, I mean, that's, so that's why we're even listening to this, I think, uh, that I've got that part of it right. So I guess we ought to listen to, to Smitty and see what he's got to say.
Yeah. Well, uh, yeah, and it, so he can, he can address that. Well, um, all I can say is for twenty, I believe it's maybe twenty-four years that the tram tours have been in existence, there's only been one constant through that twenty-four years, seriously, and that's me.
Mm-huh.
It is. There's been multiple transit directors, mayors, councils, you know, drivers, um, tour companies that have come and gone, and I've stayed. And now that things are doing really well, and sales have increased, and noticeably increased, um, now it's like, well, we can do this by ourselves. We don't need you. Um, and so if that's what council decides, then we're basically, after twenty-some years of being a good partner with the city of Eureka Springs, a very ethical partner, a good, you know, I think a good honorable, uh, partner. Perfect? No. Uh, never claimed to be, but we're pretty good at it, and we're, you know, and we want to be. We want to be good partners, um, and want to work well with the Transit Department. I told Smitty the other day, in his office. I thought, uh, until meeting in the, his office the other day, I thought right up until that time, that we had a great relationship going on the past few years, and things have really gelled and come together, uh, through, uh, well, Tanya's one of the employees there at the desk, um, and through our guides and the ticket salespeople and Smitty and the drivers, and everybody I feel like has come together and working even tighter as a team and kind of pulling together, uh, sharing those good reports and sharing the, uh, certificate of excellence awards that we get from TripAdvisor, and putting those stickers on the trams and the flag, uh, you know, that they send us to, to promote. Uh, we've done that together. Um, and so, again, I, I, I don't like this, this is, I, I, you know, I said that earlier, but the fact is, if you read the TripAdvisor reviews, uh, and the Facebook reviews, and you can, you know, wherever you want to get your information from, the reviews are not saying, you know, "We had the most amazing check-in in picking up our tickets I've ever experienced anywhere." Uh, you know, "It was the most comfortable riding tram or vehicle I've ever toured in or on." And now that's not a slam to tho, to those services. The front desk does an awesome job. The trams are wonderful, we are, you know, we're grateful and appreciate to have them, but the comments are all about the tour. Read the reviews, uh, and, and the reviews are about the tour. Who did the tours? Who has done the tours for twenty-something years? And now it's being suggested, we can just do that on our own. Yeah, you can, all you got to do is just hire a couple of guides, or a few, and then we're out of, you know, we're out of the franchise with the city, we're out of partnership with the city, and the city takes over a business that was built up, uh, by me and other people before me, and then just come in and take it over. So, that's, I believe, what is being, maybe, as you pointed out, and that just came to my attention last Friday afternoon, so I didn't know that until then. So, I've got to be here to defend my, my reputation, my company, and our history. So, uh, that's what I'm here for, and would ask that the, that the council approve this application to move forward. Yes?
Yeah, Joe. This year, who did you have running your tours in regards to talking about the town?
How do you mean?
Who was, who was?
Who are the tour guides?
Yeah, that was the thing of it.
Yeah, Tim, Tim Garrison and Christie Braswell.
Why, no, you.
Yeah, Christie Braswell, and myself are the three.
All long-timers.
Yes. Tim and I are multi-generational natives. Christie moved here as a little, little child, and so she considers herself a native.
And I remember when Michelle McDonald used to go by and do it, and she was another long timer, and I have always found, because I'm a long timer, I have always found the long timers are the ones who can speak from the heart to the people and get through to our visitors. What an awesome place we are. And I used to stand outside my shop, and you guys would be going by, and I'd wave and go, "Hi, Mick, how you doing?", and right in the middle, it was awesome, and the people loved it.
Yeah, the people do love it, and it's a great town, regardless of anything else. We've got a beautiful town, it's awesome, the history's amazing, the architecture, we love it. I still love it, I'm going to love it, and I'm going to do tours regardless of what happens here. I just don't see any reason why we need to, uh, to change it. Uh, I mean, you know, to, to, to do, do away with the franchises just so the city transit department can all of a sudden now run tours, uh, and then, you know, which, I, I don't know. Anyway.
I'd like to hear maybe a concise reason why Smitty feels he can do it better, if he can make it concise, please. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Well, let me tell you, first of all, my concerns with the group tour franchise. This, the franchise is, comes directly from the large vehicle ordinance, which was enacted in nineteen ninety-six, I believe, to protect our historic loop. The group franchise ordinance, the purpose of it was allow tour group operators to bring their clients on the loop using a city vehicle. That's the purpose of the franchise ordinance. And Charles Fargo, at the time, was transit director, said, "We're going to do that, let's alpha individual tours," and did great. The earliest numbers I can find, Transit and Records, in nineteen ninety-nine, group tours brought eleven, just over eleven thousand riders. The individual tours brought around twelve thousand riders, so they're pretty balanced between four franchises at the time. And it went down from there, and Joe's right. Now, I have no argument with Joe's guides, they're great. Joe has done a wonderful job promoting the individual tours. But let me tell you some more numbers. As of Sunday, when it entered our database, we've had eight thousand seven hundred and twelve riders on the individual tours, that's including what Transit sells and what Joe Gunnels Tours has sold, we've had seven hundred and eighty-nine group tour riders come. To me, that's a bit lopsided.
Over what period?
This is two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
Um, two thousand fourteen, Joe Gunnels Tours brought us fifty-six groups, and two thousand fifteen, he brought us fifty-five groups, and two thousand sixteen, he brought us fifty-one groups, and according to what has already come this year and what's already been scheduled, this year he's bringing fifty-two groups. Fifty-two. If some don't cancel. So my question is, if, if the ordinance is going to be Joe Gunnels Tours promoting the individual tours... the individual tours, frankly, I can do that cheaper than paying him 35%. That's my question. And now, no, no question, Joe's done a great job doing it, but is that the purpose of the ordinance? That's my question. What I would like to do is increase bus traffic in Eureka Springs. And talking with Karen at CAPC, I would like to work out something where any bus group that comes to town, where their vehicle is restricted by the large vehicle ordinance, meaning that city law won't let them see the loop, we give them a tour. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'd like to increase bus tour, bus tour traffic. If Joe can do it, great. That's what the ordinance states, and that's, that's where I'm talking from. Do you have any question? Mickey?
Smitty, who's doing the individual ones, the numbers that you gave us?
Who's doing them?
Yeah.
Well, by ordinance, we provide the trams, city provides the trams and drivers' fuel, and the franchise provides the guides.
Right, but I mean, you, you gave individual numbers and then group tour numbers.
Uh huh.
Okay. What's, isn't a group tour the ones that are on the trams?
Well, they all use the trams.
Oh, okay. That's right.
They all use the trams. And, yeah, just when a group, Joe, he schedules a group, the bus shows up, they get off their bus, they get on a tram. At 1:00 and 3:00 daily are the individual tours for people by fare to go on a tour.
Okay, so actually, the individuals could be a bunch of people from the same group that's in town, but they haven't signed up for a group thing, they're just all there together?
Some, sometimes that happens, and the ordinance does give leeway that if a walk-up group comes up, Transit can book them passage. But they have to go at 1:00 and 3:00, because otherwise, we don't have a guide scheduled.
Can we ask Joe at the same time to explain his group tour numbers?
Well, we got a couple of questions here first.
Okay. I'd like you to be both side by side, if possible.
David?
Okay. I'd like you to be both side by side, because I can pay attention to it separately. But, so the bottom line with you is just the 35% that Joe was saying, if you did the individual tours yourself, because you're feeling that the group tour business is going down. I, I agree with Joe, that I believe the group tour business is going down and will continue to go down. I don't have any illusions that that is a money-making proposition.
Speaking, yeah, it's, like, when, when the ordinance was in place, was put in place, yeah, bus tours were booming in Eureka Springs.
Yeah.
And so, but so was, but so was individual tours. And both have dropped. But group tours dropped faster enough. Individual tours are up, well, group tours are staying stagnant.
Yeah, but just look at the whole economy in general. Look at all of us here attending at the table. CAPC, flat revenue, barely making budget. City, flat, barely making budget. Transit, you, you see it slowly eroding away. There's no doubt about it. So, I can see the money behind this is to save the 35%. Bottom line.
Right, the bottom line, and, and that's true. We use the tram tour revenue to, for our match obligations with the federal funding. Which, when in 2018, just doing the budgets, $305,000 I have to find in order to match the federal funding.
So, how much is that 35% in dollars?
I don't have that number, but Marty tells me Joe averages about $4,000 a month from us for six, seven months.
About 25?
I'd say, yeah, six months out of the year, it's probably 35,000, maybe.
Okay.
It's not that much.
So, it's, it's not a huge amount of money we're talking about here, really?
It probably is to Joe.
Well, yeah, absolutely, but in the scheme of things...
In the scheme of things, as far as Transit goes, if I was doing it myself, I wouldn't make that much more, because I'd have extra expenses.
Well, you're gonna have to go hire two people.
Yeah, I'd have to hire, have to hire guides.
So, you're taking your 24,000, and you're probably gonna do it part-time, so you're not gonna have benefits.
Probably not.
So, you're probably paying it out, you're ready, so you're probably gonna knock out 12,000, about half of it. So, you're down to about 12,000, so, okay, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, really, to me, it's not really the money, it's where are our groups at? That's my, my concern.
Does the franchise fee that he receives include his costs, or does that fund his costs in hiring employees?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know where he gets his funds to hire his employees.
But, but the point is that he has to, we do not pay for his employees.
No.
Thank you.
Joe pays for his employees. The individual tickets he sells, he's responsible for sales tax on those. Where individual tickets we sell, we're responsible for sales tax. That's the only thing our Transit pays sales tax on, is our individual tickets.
Question for Joe?
Yeah. Both of you just stay there together, side by side.
She wants you to stay up here.
Come on. Okay, so between individual sales and group sales, you're probably, if you put each ticket all together for both groups, are you about where you have been, even though the group sales are down, but the individual is up? Is what we're getting?
Yeah, I think so. Again, group sales, for me, this year is not down. They may be down in the number of groups that, that, that the Transit Department has us down for, and there's a reason for that. There are some groups that come to town, and for either time constraint, or they didn't budget the tram tour money in at the time they planned the tour, they, so they just hire us as a guide service. So, we just get on their bus and talk. And so, that's a much, you know, it's a much less expensive thing for them to do. And so, there are groups like that that do that. And so, I'm including those in my groups, because that's, that's part of group sales. But in those scenarios, when you've got a group that's not doing the tram tour, and then they're like, "Well, are we gonna go, like, through the historic district?" Or, "No, we, we can't do that on your coach. We have to do that on the tram tour." And they're like, "Well, next time, we need to plan on doing that," or they can, then they can plan ahead, you know, in their budget when they're planning it that way. But, you know, this, I, I, again, I've done this my, my whole adult life. Here's the thing, David, I, I believe, I will, I will say prophetically, that group tours in America, you know, is, is going to increase, and it's going to be better than maybe it ever has been. And it's because of one thing. It's called the baby boomer generation. They changed every market that they touched. And the baby boomers just started, and you guys are smart on this, right? 19, when, 1946, I believe, was the first year, those people just now hitting retirement. They are just now hitting retirement. And I have people all the time will tell me, "Yeah, Joe, but those baby boomers, they're not gonna travel on motor coaches. They're too independent for that. You know, they're more savvy, they've got more money," and they, that's true. Right now, that's true. But there was a National Tour Association, the NTA, did a survey years ago, and they came, came out with the number one reason that senior citizens travel on motor coach tour groups, the number one reason is for camaraderie. It's not to go see the Christ of the Ozark statue, or show you the Buchi M. Brands in Missouri. It's the number one reason is for camaraderie with people their own age, their own likings, and, and, you know, backgrounds and things like that. So, yeah, the baby boomers right now, they're healthy, they're strong, they're vibrant, they're, they're financially well, you know, they're doing well. But what happens, very sadly, is mama dies, and now daddy's all by himself. And he don't want to travel by himself. So, he's gonna get on a motor coach, eventually, he's gonna get on a motor coach and go with other people. Or, most of the time, it's the other way around. Daddy dies, and mama travels by herself, and she travels with a friend. And there's gonna be more and more and more and large numbers of those people traveling. Five years from now, two years, five, I don't think it'll be much more than five years, but it might be. But I've been doing it for almost 40 years so far, 39 years this year. God willing, and my health holds up, I'll be doing it until they put me in the Eureka Cemetery. But, and, you know, and I believe we're going to see a resurgence in tourism, and specifically in a motor coach business. And so, that's just, you know, it has nothing to do with whether you approve this, but that's just a fact for the future that's coming up.
So, my question then to you, Smitty, is, obviously, you've been thinking about this. Have you thought about who you would get as your tour guides if this was turned over to Transit?
I have not thought about it, but there are three or four individuals who work for Transit at the moment who have tour guide experience.
Okay.
So, I don't think that'll be an issue.
Problem?
If it comes to that, it won't be an issue.
Problem is what I had said before. Long timers.
Oh, yeah.
That it's like, I give, my problem of doing any messing with any of this as it stands is hurting Eureka. I've seen too many times when the city has taken over various individual, and I know you have too, individual events that somebody has started, and the city decides to do it. I'd hate to see that happen.
Yeah, like I said, I'm for Eureka too. I mean, my wife's fifth-generation Eurican. And, but like I said, I'd like to see more groups come to town, and I'd like to see what they do.
Well, you've got individuals and groups. If you take ticket sales as opposed to what kind, that might make a difference. I don't know, you guys need to compare those.
Are there any further questions, Dave?
I wanna let Bob go. I just wanna clarify the financial stuff. The 35,000 is what you, you're cut.
45%.
35%.
But didn't you?
It's around, it's around there somewhere. I don't have it exact.
Pardon?
It's around that number somewhere.
Around 35,000. So, if the 35,000 is 35%, the whole business is $100,000, correct?
In 2016, the individual transitors netted 141,000. Out of that came, of course, Transit expenses, you bought in tram, and, and Joe's cut came out of the puzzle.
Right. But that was individual, then how much was the group, how much group money was bought in?
In 2016, I don't have an exact number on that, but the 51 groups. What do we do, what do Transit is, we take all the individual groups, we take all the group, groups came in, and we open the group, and we go. And sometimes it's not that way, sometimes it's the other way, sometimes I pay the city, it depends. It's a, it's a balance. I may owe, you know, owe the city a check. I hope I do. So, I wanted, I'm gonna, I'll say this, and I, I will hopefully be my, my last statement about it this evening. But please understand, and I'm sensitive about saying this because of something about maybe four years ago, six years ago, when Mayor Berry was council, councilman, who was something in one of, it had to do with the franchise, and I, I said something, and I don't remember what it was, and I think, I can't remember, but it was, you said something about me threatening something, or maybe bluffing, or some, I don't remember what it was, but, so that makes me sensitive and pause to say this. But if, if, if the franchise isn't renewed, then I continue in the tour business, right? That's all I know. That's what I do. And it's what I'm gonna continue to do. So, I buy a tram. Already looked into it. Dang, they're expensive. Hate the idea of it. Don't want to have to do that. But if I buy a tram, I already have a, a great, you know, what would you say, a channel of sales through our, because of the TripAdvisor listing, Facebook, the website sales, and, and other entities, but we're gonna do, we're gonna do the business. We got to. I have to. And so, now these numbers that we're looking at, and I told Smitty this the other day, if this is how this goes, then we truly become competition, and neither one of us are going to do as well as we could. If we would leave the system alone that's been in place for 20, what did he say, what, 20, 1996?
1996.
So, what is that? 21? 21 years? For 21 years that we've done this, and it has worked well. And the franchisees, through the years, have continued to take less because the city wants more. The city absolutely deserves more. I, I don't deny that at all. And they're getting it, and they should, and I'm okay with that. As, as I believe David asked me at that time, "Are you willing to take the 35% if we make this, you know, give you the franchise at this time?" And so, that's where we are. But I don't want to do that, and it's not a threat. I don't want it, that's not what I'm saying, but it's, it's just a fact that if that happens, then all the numbers that we're talking about gets really skewed. So, yes, ma'am.
One thing that bothers me is that we are asked to grant a franchise if we deem it to be in the best interests of the city. And one of the things that you were asked to put on your application were the activities and efforts in developing the group tour business. And it is not very specific at all. And it, it, I, I don't feel that perhaps maybe you took the application very seriously, or our job in determining whether this is in the best interest of the city. We also are supposed to be, you were also supposed to have ta, included a statement as to why you thought that the current economic situation of the city warranted your being awarded that, and you didn't really respond to that at all. And so, I am, I'm struggling with this, because I don't feel that your application has, has justified our, our making this choice.
Yeah.
And I, I'm struggling.
Okay. Let me say one thing I found, I just, this just kinda dawned on me the last couple of days in thinking about this. That the application asks, "What have you done for the past three years to promote group tours?" And the application, or the franchise, renews every two years. So, actually, just, that could even be changed to, "What have you done for the past two years?" You know, we're, we're, I'm covering a, a year before, two years ago, we were in, I was, you know, I was already had the franchise at that time. As far as the, the description, or how much, you know, how much description I put into what, you know, what we're doing, you know, I, kind of based on the, the space that was there, based on, you know, the history that we have and, and the existence, but I did address some of the things in there, but, and then some of them, you know, some of the things that, and I don't know if it was addressed in there or not, but what we do to promote group tours, to, to travel, and I, and I do cover it, because we talk about it.
Very.
Well, I mean, talking about participating in Travel South Conference, for instance, or going to some of the group travel meetings and things like that, without being specific as to who those associations are and that sort of thing, but I'm happy, you know, I'm here.
I would have liked a lot more detail.
And I'd be happy to submit that in, in a much more thorough way, if you want, but it did, you know, it, it, it may not be as much as you wanted, but it was, I mean, again, I, you, you haven't known me, but I think this meeting maybe, I'm pretty wordy. I, I get, you know, criticized a lot for talking too much and writing too much, so I wasn't trying to, you know, I don't know. So, happy to give you more description if you want to.
Kerry?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think, the, if I remember correctly, that, that the franchise renewal comes up in December, it's not now.
Correct. This is just the application.
Well, I don't even think the application is presented even before that. I mean, it's a one, it's a one time, it's a one thing deal. It's not, we approve the application and then, and then go approve. And so, I, the whole thing was, the reason that you're here tonight is because of Smitty's comments. And so, your application, I mean, that, that can be, that can be changed and improved upon, whatever you want to do, as far as I'm concerned, whenever it's time to renew the franchise.
There is a deadline that the application has to be submitted?
Well, that may be, but it, but it's still, the decision's not made until... Well, that may be, but it, but it's still, the decision is not made until.
True, it's too separate.
I, I would like to make a motion to give him an opportunity to supplement his application and bring it back.
But that's just all it has to do, is submit it. It doesn't, it doesn't improve.
Terry's actually still on the floor.
So I'm just, I'm just saying that it's, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any decision tonight. That's, that's what I'm saying about it.
Tonight was basically an explanatory meeting between the reasons of Smitty's comments and the reasons of Joe's comments. That's all tonight was, was so we could get an idea of what was going on behind the scenes on both parts. I'm sure you can make an appointment with Joe, and he can fill you in. In the meantime, a proper thing will be filled out in a timely manner, and we can then look at stuff then.
Christopher, the city court. And when, when does the application actually have to be in, so we'll all know?
The reason it's at the table now is because Joe's complying with what the ordinance says.
Yes, ma'am.
No later than three, oh, wait a minute, let me zero in.
Yeah, I lost that again.
Shelby Bay no earlier than six months before expiration, and no later than three months before expiration. I believe the last time his franchise was approved was in November. And so he's trying to stay with that, in that timeline.
So it basically has to be done this month?
Well.
The application has, it has to be submitted. It doesn't.
Usually both happen at one meeting.
He, he can update the application at any time, and we still will be voting on it later on.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to find the timeframe that, or basically the vote, the application on the vote now. Got it.
Okay. Kristin.
I, I'm confused. Is this, are we, is this, this is totally exploratory?
Exactly. This is, we had questions before the last time because of the application. Smitty had said he had some concerns, and so we wanted both of them to come here to explain the application. The application's not due for a vote yet until, I guess, whenever we want, what, November, December? It comes up for a vote.
I believe it was in November. And so if he's sticking with the timeline, it would need to be done before that November window closes.
Yeah. So, all right, Ms. Kendrick.
I would like to state that I would appreciate your amending your application to include a lot more detailed numbers, et cetera.
Since we've already received the expiration, then there's no reason to table it or anything. It's going to come back as an agenda topic, so.
Correct.
Okay, we were after, I guess.
All right. Any further questions?
I have one question. You said you have to do this after two years?
Yes.
So you have done ten of these in twenty years, or?
It used to be five years. I, I actually wouldn't, I, I don't know when, what actually, what's proper, the proper channels to do this. I would really like to ask the city council to go back to a five-year contract instead of a two-year contract, so we're not having to do this every two years. And so, you know, that's another.
Well, it's just my point is, you've done this a lot. The council changes all the time. I don't think it's really fair to, to say, well, your application doesn't meet our criteria. It's met the criteria for the past twenty years, whenever you submitted.
Well, you said that, I didn't, but that, but it is true. But no, seriously, it's true, to answer her, her question or to address it. That's exactly right. It, it has been approved with that amount of verbiage. But again, I'm happy to, to give you personally, or to submit it to the council. When would you like it? I mean, is that something that needs to be officially?
Just put it on the, amend your application with that data.
And just give it to Ann?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Comments?
Thanks.
All right. If nothing else, we're going to go to item number two.
If I could just state, if I could just state for the record.
Okay.
I did not coerce Tanya into coming here. She asked me if she could come. I said, I don't have the time. I didn't coerce her to come in.
What about Mr. Garrison? Did somebody coerce him to come in? And he can't, he's ignoring me, I can see. All right. No bringing, no more discussion on that item. Item number two, discussion of salary and wages of the police department.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. I'll kind of bring you up. I think a lot of this was due to Chief Acord's comments about hiring difficulties that he's having. Since then, he's, tomorrow he will have hired the second dispatcher. So we're only down one dispatcher. As far as salaries and wages, as noted, everybody in the city has now had a raise in three years. And the police department included, but, and I don't remember when. You'd probably know, y'all know better. But the last time we had raises, and this was several years ago, we raised all the fire and police, and we tried to bring everybody up to a level that was to commensurate with the surrounding areas. So we wouldn't be losing people, because for a long time we were training them. And then they would get here and then go off to somebody else. Fayetteville, Bentonville, of course, they're going to be higher salaries, they're larger cities. But as far as Berryville, we're actually hiring people from the county, from Berryville, getting people also from Green Forest. So I think within this area, we're doing pretty well for our salaries in that areas.
Just a general comment. There was a targeted raise for the EMTs because there was a dramatic problem there. And that was about three or four years ago under prior chief. And then I think the last raise Lonnie could remember, because he factored it in. And this is my fifth year on council, so it had to be within five years that we had a cost of living, probably four years ago. And just a comment, just as a plug, but when you're in the position of doing raises by code, cost of living adjustments, and that's just how you do them, people and everything start looking at, the cost of living's going up, therefore I should get a raise, I should get a raise. But it's, there is another alternative to that, and it's called performance-based evaluations. And, and people are raised based on their performance of the job, not just the fact that they're caught up in a cost of living. And that's why I'm here.
I think we'll be probably discussing this, this area when we go through our budgets. And you're absolutely right. We have, and I have talked to the department heads about looking for evaluation, performance evaluations. And still, but because of our financial situation, for the last couple of years, I said, you know, we're not even going to be able to look at it for a while, even any of them. So, but it's time, we're, we're trying to look and see where we are on that. So is there any further discussion?
I, I just wanted to say, see if my voice holds out. I have this booklet, the twenty sixteen salary survey for cities with populations of, from five hundred to twenty-four ninety-nine, which Eureka's in that, which is not listed here, but under police dispatch. There are two, there are two cities that have dispatchers that are here. They each have four dispatchers. One is Carlisle, one is Rector. And in Rector, the top salary is eighteen thousand seven hundred. And in Carlisle, the top salary is, the average annual salary, salary, excuse me, is twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. But, and they provide twenty-four hour service. However, with all of the other cities that are in that category, those are the only ones mentioned. So it's, it's interesting to do kind of a comparison. I have no idea what a dispatcher makes here.
We're, we're doing well. We're doing okay.
Well, that's a good one.
I mean, I don't, I can't tell you right off the top of my head, because I don't have feelings like you do.
But this is the average in the small town.
We're actually paying more than that, I believe.
Okay. Go ahead.
Based on what he said the other day, I think the salaries, give or take, without benefits, just on the basis, if it's a full-time twenty, forty a year job, they're hitting somewhere around twenty-four thousand.
That's good. This is.
And I think also you have to realize, we offer, we pay complete insurance.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, they're not paying any part of that. So that in itself is another large.
You should be on here. Eureka should be on this survey.
That's, Eureka should be on a lot of things. But we're also, you have to consider too, we're not a town of two thousand for our police and fire. I mean, we're really in the next category.
This is up to twenty-five hundred, because of the tours. I understand, I understand.
Yeah. Anyway, any further comments?
No.
All right. Next order is our resolution in support of self-tax collection. If I get a motion to discuss.
Move. Second.
I think y'all have this in your, in your packet. I don't know whether y'all are familiar with this or not. This is something we've been, I don't think the council's really been involved in too much. The state and municipal league has been pushing for a resolution to have a collection of tax for the internet sales tax. They basically called a, I think, a fair market collection, basically trying to equal, to balance out the playing field. Because right now, a lot of your out-of-state internet retailers do not collect sales tax or local tax. This last week, I went, was involved with, I got appointed to the Economic Development Committee for the municipal league, and we had a committee meeting. And the big issue was talking about this internet sales tax resolution. We've tried to get the state legislators last year to introduce legislation for this. I think basically, and what the resolution calls it, the Marketplace Fairness and Remote Transaction Parity Act. I think there's twenty other states that have already enacted this. We have gotten parts of, I think even, right now, if you go on the internet, Walmart will have, you'll have to pay a sales tax if you buy it off the internet. But if you buy it from another company that doesn't have an office in Arkansas, you won't have to pay the sales tax. So basically, we're losing not only the state, but also the local sales tax. And so this is one of the things that we're, it's not going to raise any sales tax, it's not going to make any new tax. What it is, is it's a resolution that we can give to the state and to the municipal league, stating that we support the legislation to ensure the collection of sales tax from the internet. Basically to level out the playing field, even for the local people. Because it's, they're at a disadvantage. They have to pay the sales tax, and whereas somebody else doesn't when you get it off the internet. So I think there's some information in here. There's, I haven't counted up how many cities here in Arkansas, but I think there's probably at least fifty, sixty other cities, including Berryville, pass theirs. And this resolution is actually based on, on the Berryville resolution. But Harrison, Heber Springs, I think Hot Springs, Jonesboro, West Memphis, Conway, Dardanelle. So there's just enough attached into your packet. Fayetteville has Fort Smith, Bella Vista, some other cities that, that have adopted this. Mr. McQuone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, excuse me, assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I'm confused. I thought the state passed online tax like last year or something? What was it that they passed?
I don't know. I haven't, they passed a lot of laws, but I don't know what you're referring to.
Well, it was something with tax, because I do a lot of online shopping, and I've only had it in a couple of places, but it adds our Arkansas state tax.
Some retailers are doing it and some aren't. They don't have to.
Okay, so this is going to be basically?
And this will not require anybody to do it. This is just a resolution asking the legislature to.
That we are going to send to the Congress?
We will send to our state legislators, to the governors, and let them know that we're supporting this. It's a state legislation.
And then, isn't the point supposed to be that our United States Senate then would make this a nationwide?
Well, that's, that's one, one thing that they're trying to do, but that's, hadn't happened.
Okay.
You're dealing, you're dealing with, you know, the United States Congress and Senate, so there's no telling.
No further comment needed, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? All right, so we have a, need a call, roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yep.
Ms. Adamson?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McQuone?
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be seven one six. Resolution supporting federal and state legislation to ensure the proper assessment and collection of sales tax from all internet, online sales, thereby creating a fair market for all businesses and consumers, regardless of the location of the business from which the purchase was made. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, recognizes that legislation, frequently referred to as the Marketplace Fairness and Remote Transaction Parity Act, this legislation is being considered by the United States Congress. And whereas similar legislation is considered, was considered by the Arkansas General Assembly during the twenty seventeen regular legislative session, the bill, Senate Bill one forty of twenty seventeen. And whereas this legislation would give states the authority to enforce local and state taxes that are already in place and owed by out-of-state online sales. And whereas this legislation would require retailers to collect and remit sales tax to state and local governments for out-of-state online sales. And whereas all businesses, regardless of their physical location, should be required to collect and remit state and local sales tax. And whereas the playing field, as it currently stands, favors out-of-state internet retailers that exploit a pre-internet loophole, allowing them to evade collecting state and local sales tax, even though they sell the same products in the same communities as local merchants do. And whereas, as it currently stands, stores with a local retailer, stores with a local retailer must collect sales taxes, while online stores do not, thereby enabling online stores to undercut local retail prices. And whereas this legislation is not a new tax or a tax increase, but rather enables states to collect taxes that are already due. And whereas this legislation would generate more sales, pay more sales tax to the state treasury, encourage more local retailers to maintain or expand their presence, create jobs for local workers, and infuse more money into local economies throughout the state of Arkansas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs hereby urges members of the Arkansas Congressional Delegation and the Arkansas Legislature to work for passage and to vote in favor of legislation requiring the collection and reittance of state and local sales tax by all retailers, thus making for competition in a true free market, and giving every business an equal opportunity to compete, innovate, and create jobs. Moreover, the city council of the city of Eureka Springs does hereby urge Governor Asa Hutchinson to call for a special session as quickly as possible to address this most important issue for the benefit of the state's local retail businesses and its citizens.
Okay. Our next item is, number four, is ordinance to update the code regarding the sales tax for Lake Leewood.
Sound moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Okay. This is basically an ordinance that we put on the books, so it's needed, so we can, we'll start collecting the tax and basically get this codified and put into our ordinance. Any questions? I get a motion to sign this ordinance a number and read for the first.
I sound moved.
Reading?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All who was in favor, sing. All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so, say you voted no?
I did.
All right, five one.
Actually, they started collecting again October 1, but this would allow a correction in the code book. So the ordinance number for this one would be 2259. An ordinance amending Title III, Section Point 32, regarding the collection of the 1/8% parks tax. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to amend the municipal code to reflect the current state of the law, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, that Chapter 3 of the municipal code be amended as follows. Section 1, the following shall be amended as follows. The title shall be amended to read "Parks Sales Tax." Section 2, the following subsection shall be added as follows. 3.32.03, the 1/8, that is, .125% of 1%, or 1/8 cent tax, shall continue to be levied until duly abolished as provided by law. Section 3, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are, and the same are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 4, severability. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof, other than parts so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs municipal code as a whole."
Mr. McQuillen?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2259 on the first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2259, 59, uh, for the second time, by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? We roll call?
Yes. Mr. McQuillen?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five one.
Oh, yeah.
Ordinance number 2259, and ordinance amending Title III, Section Point 32, regarding the collection of the 1/8% sales tax.
Mr. McQuillen?
I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve ordinance number 2259 on the second reading.
Second.
Mayor, if I might make a suggestion, uh, appears there are three words left out of the, uh, Section 1. It says the title, it should say this title to subsection 3.32. Otherwise, we're changing the title to section, or to the entire Chapter 3. I don't know, but there should be those three words.
Actually, sorry to interject, but Section 3 now says Parks.
Yes.
Uh, well, this really would collect, correct that phrase.
But it needs to, rather than saying the title only, because the title only referred to in the actual top of the document is Title 3, Chapter 3.
Yes.
We want to change the title only to the subsection, and the subsection is 3.32.
I wish I had the codebook so I could-
I have it here.
If, okay.
I have it here.
Please tell me if Section 3 says the temporary-
I'd like you to return that.
-four-year tax.
It's good.
See, it's, it's the subsection, chapter, here, that we're amending, not the whole of Title 3. Just-
Thank you.
3.32.
Okay, yes, I see, thanks.
So what are you writing?
So you are changing it to what, Tim?
I would suggest putting the words, uh, after the title, to subsection 3.3.
The title of subsection?
To subsection, or to Chapter 3.32.
Thank you.
So it only changes that portion of 3.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McQuillen?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we amend ordinance number 2259, uh, in, under Section 1, the title, uh, to sub, to subsection 3.32 shall be amended to read.
Second.
Is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
And I-
Any comments? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we'll back to-
The vote.
The vote of, uh-
Second reading.
Second reading.
I think you've just approved the second reading.
We just approved the amendment.
We just approved the, reading it on the second.
After I read the title, Terry made a motion to approve the reading, and then the discussion about, and so the first and second reading are finished, and the amendments-
There was no vote on the-
There's no vote on the second.
We just-
We only voted to approve it on emergency clause. Or, I mean, on not emergency.
No, we're not per-
Send rules.
We-
Okay, so you're looking for a vote on approving the second reading?
Yes.
Thank you.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. Oh, do you have a motion?
We, we approved it by title only, which, which we read.
Okay, so Terry, take back your second, your movement.
And then we, I made the motion to approve it-
No, because we gotta do it as amended.
On the second reading. And then we, and before we did that, we amended it.
Tim interjected with, yes.
Yeah. So we made it, so we need to now approve it on the second reading.
As amended, so you gotta change your motion.
Okay.
I take back my second.
Probably should. To approve as amended.
Being as amended, you didn't say that before.
Got it.
That's what he's making now.
And now I'll second again. Yeah, I can take mine back before you can take this.
So we got a motion to approve this, uh, motion as amended.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, now I need a motion for the third reading.
Do we need to go ahead and do it? Is it, I guess it does.
I mean, when we collect this.
It's already been collected, this is just a correct-
We don't have to do the emergency clause, though. I, I make a motion that we, uh, suspend the rules, uh, and, uh, read ordinance number 2259.
By title only?
By title only for its third reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McQuillen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six zero.
Mr. McQuillen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve or, oh, you, she gotta read it.
Ordinance number 2259, and ordinance amending Title III, Section Point 32, regarding the collection of the 1/8% parks tax.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2259 on this third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McQuillen?
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you. All right, get a motion to, uh, discuss the ordinance, uh, to update the code for District Court.
Sound moved.
Get a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, this is more housekeeping rules. Uh, last year, we voted to, uh, we didn't vote, the legislature changed the, uh, the way that the courts are, are handled now. And what we have, uh, we've got, actually got three, we got two ordinances and a resolution. We need a resolution to allow us to, uh, pay our portion of the judge's salary. Uh, we actually, when they redid the District Court and they re, uh, proportioned the, his salary, uh, we actually ended up paying a little bit less. But we need a resolution for this year, uh, for us to go ahead and fund this. And then the ordinance, the next ordinance, uh, will allow us to go ahead and do that and put it on the books. And then, I'm, I'm getting confused here, I think, the third ordinance, Mr. Weaver?
The third ordinance will remove the all-pay structure out of our codebook.
Yeah.
So that, uh, it'll no longer show you the correct formula for how we pay.
Did I get that correct in that order?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
So I don't know which is which.
Which is which?
Where the resolution is your first item, you should consider.
Yes.
So the one that says 5B is 5A?
5B is 5A.
The one that says-
That's a resolution.
5A is 5C?
Yes.
Is what we're gonna need to be first.
Oh, I see. And then what's next?
The next one-
5A?
No, it's 5C.
5A is next, and then it's 5A.
No, 5C becomes the next one.
Oh, I thought you said it the other way, okay.
Yeah. 5C becomes 5B, and 5A becomes 5C. Okay?
You can pass the resolution if you can tonight.
Yeah.
The other two are not as imperative, but, uh, they, they clean up the codebook just similar to what we just did, and they also allow us to not have to do one of these resolutions every year.
Mr. McQuillen?
I'd like to make a motion that we assign this resolution a number and read for passage.
Second.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I, just a comment. I noticed this one ordinance, titled 5A, says the following subsections will be removed, removed from the municipal code in their entirety, qualifications, salary, and expenses. I, I just find it interesting, we're paying the salary of somebody that now doesn't have to have any qualifications?
The qualifications are now set by the state.
Okay.
Because, because we are now part of a judicial district that includes the entire county-
That is.
And Madison County. And before, our qualification said they had to be an elector of the City of Eureka Springs, which-
Okay.
The state won't allow us to limit it to that anymore.
I just wanted to check to be sure they did have some qualifications.
But they are set by the state.
Okay.
They require, uh, a, believe, a minimum of at least four years of licensure as an attorney in the state of Arkansas. They require citizenship within the state, voter registration, and several other items.
Thank you.
All right, but, okay, so we got a motion and a second, uh, to read, uh, to assign a number, uh, for this resolution and pass on it. And further discussion on the resolution. Do we need a roll call?
Yes. Resolution number will be 717, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Eureka Springs to execute a proportionate share agreement for the state District Court judgeship base salary for 2018. Made resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to execute a written proportionate share agreement to fund 1/2, 50%, of the base salary of the District Court judgeship for the fiscal year 2018. The remaining base salary of the District Court judgeship shall be paid by the state. Proportionate share agreement is divided among the following entities. Carroll County, 2 shares. Madison County, 1 share. City of Berryville, 1 share. City of Eureka Springs, 1 share. City of Hunsville, 1 share. And the City of Green Forest, 1 share. Each share shall be in the amount of $8,378.57 for the fiscal year 2018, among the shareholders in the agreement.
We need some more motion to vote. Now we better vote.
Do we?
We didn't hold a vote.
We didn't hold a vote, we should, uh-
So we can just make one to approve what she's read?
Yeah, we just need a vote now to approve what she read.
So that has to be, because it's a one-time deal, it has to be roll call?
It does.
Sorry. Before the horse there, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McQuillen?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Six zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer these other two ordinances till, uh, two weeks.
Do we?
Not you.
There's, there's no immediate need, so if we-
All right, we got a motion and a second, further discussion?
For what?
To defer this?
But for the next two ordinances, yeah.
To the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Why?
Well, it's just motion, discussion, then, now, so, uh-
Why?
Because I'm tired.
Has there been a second?
Yes.
David seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Uh, you want to talk about it?
I think we should just get it done and out of the way. It only take two minutes.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of, uh, deferring this to our next meeting, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Five one. All right. Um, okay, that brings us to, uh, oh, excuse me. Let's see, I think I unfinished business.
No.
No. City Council comments.
Mm-hmm. I move to discuss city council comments.
Get a second?
Hold a second.
Okay. Ms. Kendrick?
Um, I've noted that city council comments have been used to announce the birth of puppies, to wish family members happy birthday, or happy anniversary, to solicit bumper stickers, and most recently, to drive a city council action to move city council meetings, to insult members of the public, calling them self-centered and self, and disrespectful, and to slur disabled persons. Such city council comments violate the code of conduct adopted by the city council, and in general insult the city council members and the public, and waste everybody's time. City council meetings should not be an opportunity for city council members to blather on about irrelevant matters, or to conduct personal charges or verbal attacks. I would like to make a motion to remove city council comments from the agenda on a permanent basis, and to permit any city council comments to be made, along with public comments, subject to the same two-minute limitation.
You want to repeat your motion?
Like to make a motion to remove city council comments from the agenda on a permanent basis, and to permit any city council comments to be made, along with public comments, subject to the same two-minute limitation.
Is there a second? That motion dies for a second.
I would like to make another motion.
Okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting prior to city council comments on a permanent basis.
Is there a second? There being no second, motion dies. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, we'll move on to, um, the-
Leeson Morris.
25 North.
North Street.
Yes.
Pose your discuss.
Second.
All right, this is, uh, I think you have maybe a letter that we received from, um, Dawn Allen, uh, with the Allen Squires Law Firm, noting that, uh, she is writing us in behalf of her client, Dr. Beard, who is leasing, uh, 25 North Street. He is concerned, evidently, my understanding was that he was, uh, possibly going to move[1790.01] He is concerned evidently, my understanding was that he was possibly going to move and vacate that premise. According to Ms. Allen, he is still planning on maintaining that practice. And so what I have prepared, if the council so wish, is, and I had Mr. Weaver prepare a lease, since we've never, according to Dr. Beard, he could not find a lease for that property. He said that he had one at one point, but he couldn't find it. Ms. Allen couldn't find a copy of it. The Eureka Springs Hospital does not have a copy of it. The hospital commission doesn't have a copy of it. And we can't find any copy of a lease with the city hall with either, within the city. So I asked Mr. Weaver, our city attorney, if he would go ahead and draft a lease for Mr. Beard to sign. Basically, it's going to require, well, you can read the lease, it's, I'm not sure how we want to approach this, but it's asking him basically for a $20,000 a month payment for that and that he will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the property. And I think this is an annual lease. And that he is also to provide insurance, liability insurance on the property.
Naming us as insured?
Make her...
Naming us as insured, is that, you're talking about...
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
He has to have the property, he can ask you liability, okay.
Both in liability and property. I think that's, Ms. Kendrick?
Has Dr. Beard been paying rent?
No.
For how long?
Forever. Forever.
He was told that at one point, he was needing the roof fixed and the city refused to pay the roof and he was advised by an attorney to quit paying rent and to fix the roof.
What attorney?
I think it was, his name was Louis Epley.
At that time.
That's what, that's what we were told.
That's what we were told.
Whether that's fact or not, I, you know, who can say?
We don't know.
Well, so is this property on the list of municipal properties that Mr., our finance officer maintains?
It is now.
It wasn't before?
Not, we couldn't find it. We weren't aware until this came up.
So when, so do we know if this building's been insured for X number of years?
We have no idea about, much about this property.
So not only was it, nobody knew we owned this building? Is that what you're telling me?
Nobody within the city hall...
Basically.
Huh? The city hall knew we owned this building?
That's correct.
Until when?
Until we started looking at, until this came up, the hospital asked me that they were interested in the building. And I said, "What building?" And they said, "The building across the street." And I said, "Oh." And that's when we started doing research on it. And then we couldn't find any lease on it.
I wonder how many more of the people think so?
Well, that's a good point.
That's, wow, okay.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I was pretty amazed too. I think all of us, I think Mr. McClung, I think Mr. McClung is probably a person that's been on the council as long as anyone and Mr. Weaver's been here.
And you?
Ten years, fifteen...
Never, no.
Going on sixteen years and you never prepared a lease?
No, I've never seen a lease, I've never, to my knowledge, never been told that this was a city property until the mayor approached me about removing the tenants.
So did your, did your tenant not understand that he needed to pay rent? I mean, I would have thought he would come down to city hall and say, "Oh, here's my rent for this month."
Why?
Yeah, why?
Because most honest people would do that.
We have businesses that didn't pay water.
He was told, I think, we ran into, as Dee used to say in a movie, there was a failure to communicate.
I would say so.
A long time ago and it just continued on. And he continued to make, he put on a new roof, he put in the heating system, he repaired the plumbing, there were some serious plumbing issues going on.
How do we know that? We didn't even know we had the power.
We were told. But it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. I mean, all of this is irrelevant except to where we are today. The fact is that there's a lease that he's got the building, he's been occupying the building for several years. Mr. Mitchell? I'm sorry.
I would like to say that my inquiries are not irrelevant because if I were going to rent a building to someone and they told me that they had paid rent on their last building for five years, I would not be interested in them as a tenant. I mean, I don't understand that.
Well, I don't either, but that's the facts.
Well, I'm saying as a landlord and the city's going to be a landlord...
And I'm not putting you down when I said it's irrelevant. But those are the facts and nothing can be changed about it.
I know.
And I'm not calling Mr. Dr. Beard's character into, you know, these are just the facts. This is, as we understand him, as Mr. McClung and I, I think we were both pretty well shocked when we were...
My dad was a patient of his 20 years ago and I had no idea at that time.
It's been 20 years?
I can't say that he wasn't paying rent then, I don't know.
He's been in there for 30.
All right.
And there's no way of telling and it doesn't matter how, you know, the fact is, we have a lease today that we need to see about, presenting. I was calling Mr. Mitchell first, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, just for somebody that has managed hospitals before and recruited physicians and everything, there is a point, a common point where a lot of times hospitals to place physicians there, negotiate that they handle the offices and set them up and the buildings and they extend these to physicians to get them to practice in a community. I'm not saying that happened, but it is, it is the standard of practice out there that happens a lot, that that is, one of the benefits to a physician is that the office is taken care of. And that may have happened in this case, number one. Number two, in this lease under, on number 25 waste, it says not to conduct any business there on or therein, not store or permit to be stored there on or therein any explosives or combustible substances. That combustible substances in this case in a doctor's office would be containers of oxygen. They will be on-premise. And so just FYI. I don't think he has nitrous oxide or anything else in there or any type of anesthetic agent that I'm aware of other than IV, but the oxygen will be there, just FYI. And then the third point I wanted to make is since I've been in this town, there is down from Dr. Beard's office, about two buildings down, there is a small white house that was used as a geriatric daycare center when I first got here. Then the hospital looked at moving physical therapy into it, but instead got the place out on Passion Clay Road. And right now that a house is being used as a physician, emergency room physician's sleep room. So in answer to Bob's question, I'm not too sure there's not another house on that one.
Well, according to Act DataScap, there's not. This is, this is the only piece of property that the city owns, according to Act DataScap.
So I wonder, I'm worried about who that house belongs to.
It's on Act DataScap. And I looked it up because when you said something to me, it made me curious and I went back and looked and I couldn't find any other property that the city owned except for this one. Peggy?
Does Dr. Beard know that you're entering into a lease that's $2,000 a month that he's not been paying all this time?
Mr. Beard knows that we're preparing a lease, that's all.
But he doesn't know what the terms of the lease are? Yes?
Well, I wasn't sure what the terms of the lease was until we drew them up.
But does he, but in doing that, are you still asking him to pay $2,000 a month?
Yes, ma'am. Unless the council wants to make it less.
One more.
One more.
Yeah. I'm just curious, I mean, when you enter into something, like you talk to your tenant first, the month is going to be $2,000 a month. That would be the first thing I would talk to my tenant about. And if they had any pets or, you know, combustible materials. That's all.
Okay. Mickey?
Two questions. So over the years, he hasn't been paying rent, he has put on a roof, he's done plumbing, he's done all kinds of AC and stuff like that.
According to Dr. Beard.
Those kinds of things, well, I would assume he would. Those kind of things are not cheap. So while he may not have been paying the city or the hospital or whomever a monthly stipend for the rent, he has been doing the upkeep and something we haven't had to do.
Correct.
So that's a plus.
Correct.
Second question is, because I honestly don't remember how this came about. How was it that it was determined that he was leaving at the end of the year?
That was the, what Dr. Beard told us, he was having another practice in South Arkansas. And he was, at the time was considering closing the office. Evidently, he's changed his mind since then.
Oh, okay, so he had notified us that he was going to be moving, so to speak.
When we were talking, when we were asking, yes.
Okay.
We had been told and we went up and he was implied that he was, he possibly was going to move.
Okay.
I believe that's true.
Well, yeah, it came across as more definite to me.
Yeah. We were good by the first year, was our understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I see number 11, assignment leases shall not assign this lease or sublet it, which I think is a great thing to have in there, very obviously. The second thing is, kind of coming off what Alderman here just said, the $2,000, could somebody tell me how we came to that number?
I basically took the square footage of the property and I looked at other rental property around the area and it varied from a dollar and a quarter down to 75 cents. And I don't, I think, considering the upstairs and the downstairs, the square footages, this range, a little bit under a dollar a square foot.
And so, okay, so the main floor and the sub-basement floor were evaluated at the same amount per square foot? They weren't a different square footage price?
No. I just took the basic square footage and...
Does council usually get involved with leases? Isn't that a mayor's responsibility? I'm just going to ask.
In the use of property that belongs to the city?
Yes, sir.
You have the authority to determine how it is used, if it is being transferred. This is not a permanent transfer, but it is a temporary transfer, so you should have some say in whether you want to use it, particularly in this instance because it had been bantered about as a place to push the council to as a new home. If you were going to use it for that, there would be budgetary items that would also give leave to your consent.
Yes, Ms. Snyder?
Just a real quickie here. I'm assuming that the October 10th date will be changed to whenever.
Correct.
And secondly, since this is a rather lengthy lease, do we actually have to approve this tonight or can we do it at the next week so we have time to actually go through it or does it even matter?
I would suggest that you approve the resolutions attached to it to approve this as is. Then it would be presented to Dr. Beard and his representatives. They would have a chance to accept it as is. If they do not, then they would have to submit changes and you would have to consider those and then pass that. But right now, there's nothing on the table either way as to what a lease should set. This would be a starting point and, but the city really is not in a position to hand it to Dr. Beard at this time and say, "We'll do this."
Right.
Without your approval.
Well, that's what I'm asking, can we wait two weeks or no?
Well...
Is it better to just go ahead and get things started?
We need, we need a resolution. And I think this goes back to what Peggy was saying. This gives us a starting point because right now, I need something that the council is going to say, "Go ahead and let's lease or don't lease." If you don't lease, then we're going to have to file a whole different deal.
Okay, so now, what we would do is we would approve the resolution tonight, you would give this to Dr. Beard and say, "We would really like a response for our next meeting in two weeks to work on it."
I would suggest that that would be what the mayor would likely do, would be to place it immediately as possible with Dr. Beard's representatives and let them, I mean, if they want to reject it by next meeting or they want to accept it by next meeting, we can't let it go on forever now that the city knows that it owns this piece of property. We're letting potential waste occur if we let this drag on for the next six months.
Right, well...
So I would suggest the council, yes, move as fast as they can to start the process and put timeframes in place to get it done if it's going to get done. If it's not, then alternatives have to be sought to prevent the city from having a building that they're not collecting rent on.
Ms. Kendrick?
I think we are way jumping the gun. First of all, I don't even know if we want to lease this property. We haven't discussed the fact of where we may want to move our meeting space, so I think that we need to discuss that first. Number two, I don't know that we really know to whom we want to lease this property. We're proposing that we enter into a one-year lease. Maybe what we ought to be doing is giving Dr. Beard notice. And so I think that we ought to defer action on this until we discuss our permanent meeting space. And then I would like to discuss if we decide that we don't want to use that as our permanent meeting space, I think that we need to discuss whether we would like to offer it to other persons.
Mr. Mitchell?
We need to remember that Allegiance wanted to lease that building potentially or made it an offer or came to us for that other physician that is internal medicine that they've recently recruited. So there is a possibility that there is interest in that building and it seems like it would behoove us for the mayor to collect a little more information about the potential leases that could be more than Dr. Beard.
Ms. Snyder?
Something that everybody seems to be forgetting is we are talking a 30-year resident who has been there for 30 years and taking care of it as his own. I think sheer decency and consideration should be at the top of the list of things to do and ways to behave.
Mr. Fox?
Well, I too think that we need to make a decision whether it's still a viable meeting hall or not before we execute any kind of a, anything else, whether it be a resolution or a lease. I mean, if we're going to take it off the lease or off the list, then, and really, you know, right now, for me, it's still the top of the list as a place to go.
One of the reasons I brought this up before the decision, I'm talking about permanent meeting spaces, I wanted the council to be aware of this letter from his attorney. So that he was not planning on vacating it as we had anticipated. And that kind of puts a little bit new slant on things in my mind. Now, I agree, you know, I think we still, we can go ahead and, you know, listen to a motion to defer this until later on in this meeting or until next meeting if we want, but I wanted to get this out to the council along with a possibility of the lease and so y'all would see where we're going with this at this point.
I would suggest that we... I would suggest that we do just that, that we, if we're, if we want to continue and discuss where we hope to land, that right now, it's on the list, that if we, if it comes up and we knock it off the list, then you can bring it back up. Defer it till after the next discussion.
Mr. Mitchell?
I have a motion that we table this lease agreement based on further discussions applicable until the next council meeting.
The resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Resolution, yeah.
Second.
Discussion on that. Mickey?
It would make it easier for us to decide what we're going to do if we had an idea from Dr. Beard, if this lease would even be amendable to him. So, if we're going to defer the resolution for two weeks, can we do that with Dr. Beard having to give us a yes or no on this in regards to is he even interested in this lease? If he is, then we would further our discussions, whatever. If he's not, that takes him off the list and leaves this on the list.
Well, we can always, I'll be glad to go ahead and throw this out to Dr. Beard for him to review. I think that'd be, you know, at this point in time.
What are any problems with that?
All right. We got a motion to defer this until the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five of a sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So moved.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like you to immediately or as soon as possible, look into the insurance situation on that building.
We have it listed on us on municipal league.
Oh, you do?
Yes. As soon as I discovered that we owned the property, I had lined, "Go ahead and put it on our list."
Okay.
All right. I'm not about to let a building go without insurance.
I don't know what this city does.
May I ask?
I'm just telling them what I'm doing.
Yeah, right.
Yes, ma'am.
What can we do to make sure that we know about all the city-owned properties? Should we run an act data search report or, I'm surprised that this was out there. I'm surprised the land bank committee didn't pick it up.
Well, the land bank was looking for vacant streets and alleys. They weren't looking for property.
Okay.
As such. And they very well may have thought that we were aware of it when they looked through it. I mean, it shows up on Ag Data Scout. Also, remember too that Ag Data Scout is a new, relatively new form of communication. It's what, five, six years old, maybe?
It's awesome. And we should take advantage of it.
Yeah.
That's interesting. That's something. Who's been paying the taxes on the building in all this time?
There are no taxes. The city pays no taxes.
So, the tenant, tenants can pay taxes?
Or it just disappeared for people?
Awesome.
So, we're okay on that. All right. Our next item of business is the decision on the permit meeting location. Get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Well, basically, you know, again, we have, we've been discussing two places, 25 North Street and then the fire station downtown. I mentioned to you at the last time, I had talked to the school. I didn't get into it. Ms. Kendrick said she could tell me anything I need to know about the lease. I saw the lease. The lease wasn't the problem with the school. The school, I've been approached by the community foundation that they were willing to let us have the space up there rent-free. We would have to do some improvements on the outside regarding the sidewalk to make it handicap accessible, which wouldn't be much, and then also work some on the parking lot and clean that up. They would go ahead and do the improvements and I think we would just provide the furniture on there.
At what cost?
At, huh?
What cost? How much would the improvements cost?
We wouldn't be paying the improvement cost.
No, no, no. The improvements to the sidewalk and the parking lot.
Probably less than $5,000.
Side we're talking to the other side.
We're talking about where we were looked at originally.
It's the gym side.
It's the old east lab.
East lab, yeah.
It's the old east lab. That's where it's at. I wouldn't think of that as a gym side, but anyway. I had, the question then came up and again, the approach the school board because again, whether or not the school would donate this to the city. One of the members of the school board felt very strongly that the school board would be willing to give the school property to the city.
That section?
The whole property.
The whole property?
Oh. Well, the problem I had, and that's why I'm talking about the lease, the lease didn't, and the community foundation was willing to work with us if we were able to do that and work out some type of an arrangement where they would still be able to manage portions of the property and manage the, work out some deal with the parks and how the community center would work out. That's again, issues that would have to come up later on. The question came up with the superintendent. He felt that he was told that they could not give the property to the city. My question was, in the past, other school properties in the state had been given to the cities. I think, I want to say the city of Greer, but that may not be correct, but it was one of the cities in the western side of the state. Had a school, because of school consolidation, they had a vacant abandoned school property and the school district gave it to the city for a community center. So, I felt that it could be done. But there, again, the superintendent said his attorneys felt that it couldn't be. So, I asked Senator Brian King to ask the attorney general for an opinion on whether or not that could be given. The school property, vacant school property could be given to the city at no cost. His understanding was they couldn't give it, they would have to give fair, they'd have to get fair market value and they couldn't just give it to somebody. Now, you got your hands up.
And so, we would accept the property then subject to the lease to the community center? Is that correct? Well, I mean, it is subject to that lease and so, without the community center's consent...
The community center said that they would be willing to work with us somehow in working with that lease, yes. Yes, ma'am?
My concerns are that the school board has had to come up with quite a bit of money to just keep that building afloat since the time that it leased it to the community center and the city does not have those kinds of resources. They'd had to replace a roof?
That was, that was by insurance money paid for the roof.
And I think they'd come up with some other funds as well.
Now, it's all up to the community center to take care of all the maintenance. The school's not doing any of the maintenance on the property. My issue originally was, and when I first, prior to becoming mayor, I was approached this and I said, "We couldn't afford the building if it was given to us at this point in time." This was prior to the, and then the community center foundation got involved and they came up with a business plan that would work with the buildings, I want to say 100, basically renting out and developing that along with the interior area where the farmer's market is and the community center, gymnasium stuff. They came up with a business plan that would show how they could supplement and make it pay and make it work.
I'm aware.
I'm sure, because I think he helped write the lease.
I, yeah.
So, that kind of changes the whole thing. There's a business plan out there that can make it viable. The community center, if they do not have to put in, you know, the $200,000 to $300,000 that's needed, then they can, for, to pay the school board, I think that's, the price is $300,000. They don't have to pay that, they can use that money to work on the building. So...
But, but the lease was over a period of years and the payments were, I don't recall how much it was per year, but it was something like $30,000 a year. So, it's not like the $300,000 is hanging over them right now.
Well, it'd still be $30,000 a year that they'd be able to put into the project rather than... So, Mickey?
Something that the school board and I have talked about before and to keep in mind is they didn't buy the property, we, the taxpayers did. They own it in name only, but precedent has been set in various places around the country in regards to a property like this, a school property like this where they built new. The school board has given it to the city. In our case, what would be best would be for the school board to sign the property over to the city with a contract or a title thing, statement stating that the community center would be in charge primarily of the property. They would still be there, they'd still be doing all their thing, but they wouldn't be having to physically buy the physical property. We would have first dibs, so to speak, on our meeting room where we want to move all of our stuff to the courthouse, whatever. The parks would be able to put in their stuff. Anything between city and community center could be hashed out ahead of time and agreed upon with some leniency in various places further down the years if someone wanted to tweak this or that. But there's no reason why that property cannot be signed over to both the city and the community center. And this would pretty much help everybody in this town, including the school who still has to pay all their stuff on it.
One of the other things that I had thought about was if this did happen, if the council agreed to this and the attorney general agreed, was we'd be able to move the entire city hall up there.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
And then we would also have that amount of money that we would be able to use that we're now paying to the county. But, David?
You know, if our financial papers looked a little better than they look right now, I would feel comfortable extending out. But, you know, we've got this nefarious thing going on with a potential new hospital. It's kind of undecided. The community center is a great idea, but the reality of it to me is financially, I'm worried about the burden and the foundation closing down and the city being the one that's stuck. The city, maybe we can get a surety bond on the hospital, all that stuff to cover safely and maybe we could get one on this community center that would cover it. But it's just, it's not sounding like such a solid deal in my mind that it's something that I would be comfortable with the city taking on at this time in this economy.
Well, the other option is that we can just move up there without, just have rent free and leave it as a situation with the community center.
And that would only be about $5,000 or $10,000 and that would be our loss at the worst if it all collapsed.
That's true.
And that is an option.
Now, we would not be able to move any of this, well, we could still move the city halls up there. I mean, we'd be paying them rent.
But we'd have the meeting room, we'd have, and that was a big room and it would be exclusively ours. So, it has, it should be considered, that should be a consideration, yes.
Yes, sir. I didn't quite understand what you just said about moving all of city hall up there without any ownership. Is that what you just said?
We could and just, I said, "There's another option, move the city hall up there and paying the rent up there."
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's just another option.
The thing, the thing that kind of concerns me is, is the moving of the city hall and all the offices up there, that's certainly a possibility and there's space in that, in that other building to facilitate all of that. The otherwise, that's the only thing that I worry about is that, I mean, of course, the financial responsibility we have to maintain, but I don't know that we want to get into the leasing business if, if we didn't move city hall up there. I mean, that's what their intention is, is to, is to try and rent those properties out. And I don't know if the city wants to go in competition with the general public in town to try and, you know, and to be a competitive landlord in that situation. Have you thought about that too? I'm just curious.
If we were given the property that we would, and did not move up there, or even if we did move up there, there may still be extra room up there. I had looked to see how much square footage, you know, we need and how much is up there. The foundation, it would still be, as far as I'm concerned, would be the managers of that. But it still would be in competition, which is like we have any extra building, unlike Dr. Beard's office right now in a sense where it's in competition.
So, the foundation would still be, that would be their revenue source, basically?
Correct. And they would be in charge of the maintenance.
To maintain everything else.
Sure. Bob?
You know, you mentioned the business plan that might help support it. Do you know why no businesses have ever moved up there? I mean, that was their plan.
They haven't renovated the space yet. The plan concluded their first renovating the space before they leased it.
And that has never been done because of no...
I don't know why.
Oh, okay. That's...
A part of its funding. Should, I mean, you know, they're a nonprofit and they've been raising funds. They raised, and Chrissy, you may know more than, was it $100,000 to tear the building down?
Oh, I don't, I don't know anything about their finances.
Oh, but they had to raise part of their money just to tear the building down.
Right.
And the school district didn't do that on there. They also cleaned out the basement. We had a, I know there was a tenant that was interested in renting the basement at one point, but it was still pretty cruddy looking, cruddy little, you know, so...
Like the old shop room?
Yeah, downstairs.
I have a question about the...
Yes, ma'am.
If we were to move our meeting space into the east lab?
East lab?
How quickly could it be ready? Have they given us a timeline?
No, again, I mean, this is still, this is all relatively new within the last two weeks, three weeks. When I was approached on this two weeks ago, actually a little, a little more than two weeks, it may have been, I'm trying to think. I may have talked to one of the members of the foundation on a Friday or a Thursday, Friday, and then we had council meeting on a Monday. And that's when I said, "There's some issues that have come up recently." Then I had lunch with them and the superintendent and Diane Murphy's been in Europe for the last two weeks. She just got back. So, a lot of this is still ongoing. Obviously, I haven't heard anything from the attorney general. That's going to take time before we can get anything done with that. We can get other attorney's opinion, but I figured that we'd be better off if we got the attorney general's...
I don't think the school board would act against the advice of their own attorneys without the attorney general's opinion.
Well, I mean, you know, we could get other attorneys from the legislative audit, legislative people. But, you know, again, that's just, not just their opinion. I'd much rather, if we're going to get opinions, I'd rather have the, try to get... much rather, if we're going to get opinions, I'd rather have the, try to get the highest opinion that we could. Mr. Mitchell?
So, at this point, we have the fire station, Norris, the East Lab, some futuristic possible everything, I haven't quite got my brine around that other option yet.
Oh, that Mr. DeVito mentioned.
Well, no, and then DeVito brought that down below, and so, I mean, so, the fire station, Norris Street, the East Lab, then there's that possibility of the city owning the whole thing, which probably still the meeting room's in East Lab, I would assume, and then there's this downstairs. Is that an op, was that a real option?
It was, I mean, it's an expensive option.
Meaning approximately how much, just out of the blue, $100,000?
Probably.
Oh, well, then that's out, because with the Norris and the fire station, if we didn't do live recordings or nothing, was really...
It was back down to 20, I think.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah. Peggy?
One of the things that I'm having trouble with is like, who's running this place? You know, I mean, here you have Cal County owns the city hall building, and you rent out from them, but it seems that the community center foundation now is being usurped by the school board, and the school board...
No.
But, the school board is saying that we could move in there.
No, the school board's not saying that, the community foundation's saying that.
The community foundation?
The school board is saying, the community, the school board said, "We will not give the property to the community foundation."
Right.
"We will consider giving it to the city."
Yes.
Now, there is a lease that we would have to work with. The community foundation had said, "We would work with the city in redoing the lease," or working, you know, renegotiating or whatever needs to be done, but the school, the community foundation said they feel like it would be a benefit to them to have us up there, to have a presence in that area. The school board doesn't have anything to do with it.
All right. So, but we're not, if we moved into that room, the lab or whatever it's called, we wouldn't be paying any rent, and they would do the renovations now?
That's what I was told, we would do the outside. We have to do, fix up the outside, do the sidewalk and parking.
And then, also furnish it?
Yes.
And at that point is, well, that's a whole different picture.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Kendrick?
I would like to make a motion that this council move our meeting spaces to the Norris property.
Okay, got a motion to the...
I'll say it for discussion.
Okay, discussion on that.
I have a question for the attorney. We have, we have voted to make a decision tonight. Can that be postponed, or does it, is there, are we stuck with that?
You have the ability to postpone at this point.
What decision?
Picking a spot.
Right.
Yeah, tonight was our picking a spot decision night.
Catherine, if y'all want to make, you know, postpone, it's like the attorney says, y'all, y'all have that privilege. Mr. McClung?
The Norris Street probably, really, it is my first choice. However, the thing about the school is, is still pretty intriguing en masse, not as, I don't, I'm still not, I have reservations about just moving into the space and them still, and it's still belonging to the school and the foundation situation. I have reservations about doing it that way, but if we owned it and it was in a workable arrangement where we could see that, you know, that it, we were going to have to peel a lot of money out of our pocket for maintenance, I mean, moving everything up there from over here, I think is a good idea.
To where?
To the school property. So, I hate, I don't, you know, I would like to post, I don't know if I want to make this motion yet, but, you know, as far as taking a vote on, on the Norris Street property, I'd like to postpone that because I'd like to kind of see where the school thing leads, just to see, but that's my thoughts.
David?
Since we're meeting here now, we don't have, I assume we don't have this immediacy need at this point is not as crucial as it was at one time, and we seem to have patched that issue up with this meeting room. It might be worthwhile to let a little bit more time go until that school board thing gels a little bit tighter. I am still, though, at this point, leaning strongly to the Norris Street personally, as Mr. McClung is, I really am, I'm just, but I would like some more time.
Ms. Kendrick?
I think the school property, we've been discussing this since we've talked about moving, which has been at least six months, and I don't see it really any further along than it has, you know, was in the very beginning, and, I mean, we've spent way too much time agonizing over this decision, I think we need to move on it.
Well, hmm, let's see. Twenty-plus years that we've ignored this, we've worked on it for four to six months, we've had different decisions from the school board and/or the community center that keeps getting better and better and better for us. We find out that our 30-year resident and the doctor of many is not actually leaving, but it's better to ignore the pluses of maybe getting free property and a free home and booting out a 30-year resident? That's always really nice, that's thoughtful. Yeah, let's just cut that stuff off right here before it can go any further. I mean, we could end up with free rent, free property, a place for the community to meet, a place for that stuff in the community to happen, or we can be in this little teeny place compared to the school property. We can be in this little teeny place that has a small parking area and a one-way street and doesn't do squat for the community. Okay, yeah, let's make a fast decision rather than postpone and get final answers.
Anybody else?
Is there any motion?
Yes. Yes. A motion to move the meetings to the Norris property is on the table.
Was there a second for that?
Yes.
There was a second, yeah.
Terry for your stuff.
Yeah, Terry was going to make that.
Well, yeah, I'll make a motion that we defer the decision on that to give us more time to see which, to see what happens with the school property. That is the motion.
But, did we have a motion to vote on first?
We get motion to defer over...
Yeah, we can, yeah, that's what I wanted to defer that vote.
And I'm seconding.
And now, and in discussion on that, you're going to say something?
You need to make a, when you defer, you need to make it to a certain point in your motion.
At least, at least, at least 30 days.
Or 30 days or something.
I'll defer it until we get the attorney general's opinion. That's even better.
Till after the, first meeting after?
Yeah, first meeting after we get the attorney general's opinion. Look, we, you know, we've been, we've been agonizing over this a long time, but there may be a real option out there that might be something that's workable that we should not pass up. I mean, we're responsible to this community, so I think we have to weigh it out.
Peggy?
I agree that we need more time, more of these options come up. I think it's outrageous that now there's like no rent, no problem with fixing the room up, and they were really adamant about saying, "We have to have this $20,000, we have to do this, we have to do that," and now it's completely changed. I don't mind, I don't mind waiting at all to get more information, I really don't, because it's like, hey, you can have a whole school building for free, yay, and maybe we should do it.
Well, that's not what the option is, the whole school building.
Let me say that, Peggy, there's been changes in board membership.
I understand that.
Well, because of changes in board membership revolves around new, new offers and new, you know, so, it's not just, you know, all of a sudden, they're making this decision. So, new members come on and they talk to the other members, so, you know, it's a little different feelings than what it was when we first started talking about it.
Exactly, and I apologize, because I don't feel well, and I was hostile.
All right, well, we actually, actually, the motion is to defer this, and I think that's a wise one, because we do have some issues that have come up, so.
And one other question, when is the attorney general supposed to get back to you?
A week from Tuesday, I've just counted along with Tuesday.
Something like that, soon.
Then hell freezes off.
Hell freezes off.
When the attorney general gets to it.
Will any time that Dr. Beard gets to stay there for free?
I think the motion was for me to talk to Dr. Beard and to show him this lease and to come back to the council table.
I think that's a fine idea.
But, we have a motion on the table for to defer this, so. All those in favor, see if I'm saying ours?
Aye. Roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Roll call?
Confer it?
Yep.
It's not a spooky chair, have you...
Ms. Kendrick?
No.
Ms. Adamson?
No. Um, yeah. That was a yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five-one.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us up to, I think, is there anything else I'm missing here?
Nope.
All right, bring this to the agenda setting. Anyone?
I would, I'd like to have updates at each meeting on what you're getting from the community center.
I'll be glad to, yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I know anything, yeah. All right, city council comments. Mr. Mitchell, start your end.
This meeting is already extended.
Yeah, I'm on our other chairs.
Peggy?
Well, yeah, it was a long meeting, it was a very interesting meeting, a lot of things came up and things got changed, but because Tim is always here.
This is for you, Tim. Watch out for splendor.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Ms. Kendrick?
I'm listening rather than sit through these things.
Oh, I just love it when somebody's nose gets twisted and they just refuse me. I'll just pass it on, everybody knows what's happening.
Bob?
I have no comment.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I've had a few people from over in the East Mountain area contact me about those old wonderful speed bumps.
Do you like it?
No, I think it's the opposite, as a matter of fact, the way they explained it to me, so, I know that, I think we decided that that was your bailiwick, so...
It's the cops.
There it is, buddy, it's back in your, your lap.
All right, I figured it'd be tough. Anything else? Any other new items?
No.
Are they in your wallet?
No, no.
All right. Well, I've been, I knew, I knew this day would come.
She usually...
I don't know what decision will be, I guess I know, but as far as, we've got a lot of music and arts coming up. This weekend, we have the Hailberry Harvest Moon Festival out at the farm, Hailberry, and 13th and 14th, Bluegrass in the park, from all afternoon till 7:00 PM in the Basin Park, and I think, Terry, is this the guy that came in to voice the...
Yeah, yeah.
Came in third nationwide?
Yeah, on the 21st, yes.
Yeah, I can't remember his name.
Bieber, not, not Justin.
Bear.
Bieber, yeah.
Bear, bear, Bear Rabbit, I don't know what it is.
Anyway, it's gonna be, gonna be some good music all the way around. And also, the Saturday will be Saturday Night Gallery Stroll, 6 to 8, and then 16th through 21st, we'll have the Flannair Outdoor Painter Society, which will be painting all over town, the 16th through 21st. Oh, one of my favorites, the 19th through the 21st will be the first showing of The Voices of the Silent City from 5:30 to 8:30 PM at Urick Springs Cemetery. Please go out if you get a chance to see that, it's a great time, and, yeah, they always do a great job. 19th through the 22nd, War Eagle Craft Fair, all day, at War Eagle Mills, and then the 19th, 27th, same weekend as Pine Mountain Arts and Crafts Fair, from 8 to 5, and then the 21st will be Oktoberfest down on Center Street this year, from 8, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then, no, we lied, the 21st is Music in the Park with Bear Barber, Bear Barber, that's 5 to 7.
Zombie Crawl, Zombie Crawl is in, is in, coming up too.
That's 28, I think, at the next meeting.
Oh, oh, that's a little bit, that's premature, I brought that up earlier.
Get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, but first of all, my dad's birthday is the 16th of October, he'll be 87 years old and he's still painting, and I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.